All right, we're at six o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We'll do the Hensley's kind of lead the top of it. And we'll do those.
Lord, teach us to be generous, teach us to serve our neighbors as they require. To give of ourselves and not to count the cost, to fight and not to heal the wounds, to toil and not to seek for rest, to labor and not to ask for reward. Except to know that we are applying our best judgment and efforts to the betterment of our community. And we pray for our neighbors who work to secure and protect our public safety and put themselves between danger and the rest of us, day and night. We are grateful for them and for all that they do to keep us safe. For all of the unspoken intentions of those assembled here, we say amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before I call it to the meeting in order, I did want to just thank the personal privilege. We lost a member of our community, I guess a couple of days ago. We lose members unfortunately of our community many times, but an individual that I think was well-known in our community was not unusual to see him sitting on that end chair there when I was sitting down where Councilman Wright is, which put him pretty close. But he took a love of his city. Mr. Leonard Steinman passed away, I believe it was on Sunday.
Saturday.
Saturday. Saturday. Okay, thank you. I've been out of town for a few days, so thank you. And like Mr. Brown and Mr. Brown, he never was shy about showing his opinions and sometimes we agreed, sometimes we didn't, but I put in a comment that we always walked away friends. So if you'd just take a moment to silence, to celebrate his life. Thank you very much. I have not seen details, so I'm sure if they're not in the press, there will be. Leonard will, most of the time he missed. He gets a challenge sometime, but he was a lot of fun. All right, with that, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Allers?
Present.
Deacon?
Here.
Vensley?
Present.
Lester?
Here.
Mealy?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Spencer?
Present.
Spicer?
Present.
Wiseman? Reich?
Present.
The other four.
All right, from the forum, we go to item three, adoption of the agenda.
I'd like to make an amendment to reorder the agenda a little bit to, I believe, most of the public's here for some of the resolutions. Uh, sorry, I would move to move, uh, resolution twenty-three thirteen and twenty-three, twenty-two thirteen fourteen up to after item nine, presentations, presentations from the public.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thanks. All right, any other changes to the agenda?
With that change, Councilman Lester, the only reason why I'd be opposed to it is because Councilwoman Wiseman was gonna try to join it virtually and was just trying to give her a little extra time. So I would be opposed to that adjustment. I will seek the pleasure of the rest of the committee.
Councilman Mealy?
I think, you know, there's enough people signed up for comments that that's gonna take forty-five minutes or hours, so I wouldn't see from what Councilwoman Wiseman, or Councilwoman Wiseman shared with me that that would be an issue to, you know, she would be able to switch it every now and then. I think it would really benefit the public that's here and what folks.
Other discussion. All right, you've got amended. Motion on the adoption of the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Go ahead and do a roll call then.
Allers?
Aye.
Deacon?
No.
Vensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Nope.
Spencer?
No.
Spicer?
No.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Five ayes, uh, the amendment fails.
All right. You've got the...
Six is only needed on resolutions and ordinances, so five is the majority of the voting for a procedural motion. So the motion...
That motion would pass.
It would.
All right, so you have amended the agenda then, so we will move those items up to nine as we're going through the comments, so do these amendments that are on the agenda. Mislandish agenda items, any, anything? Public hearings. Announcements by the mayor, none. Item seven, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. Ms. Perry, financial update?
Thank you, Ms. Perry. The first page that you have in the financial update is the summary of the revenue model. This indicates that for sales and use tax, we are anticipating five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars over projections. In franchise and utility tax, mostly due to electric and gas utilities, we are approximately three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars above projections. And on the fees and licenses, we have a shortage of almost fifty-eight thousand dollars, which is due mainly to a shortage in building construction fees. As you look at page two and page three, that's a breakdown of all of the accounts that are within those categories. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on the revenue model.
Questions or discussion on the revenue model? Councilman Allen?
And I know I'd sent this to you before, on the fifty-seven thousand undridge, or whatever you, you know, the deficit we call there, there was, you know, that's kind of abnormal.
So there are a couple factors playing into that. Uh, it could be that we had projected revenues for projects that have not yet come to fruition, or I do know that that is one of the budget items that we've modified for FY twenty-four because it appears that the prior year's projections were higher than they probably should have been.
Thank you.
Next report is the sales tax report. Um, this shows that collections in the general fund sales tax for the June, I'm sorry, the July collection, July receipt period, were one million, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. That is just over seventy-five thousand dollars above our projections for the month. That puts us at the five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that was on the first page of the revenue model. Capital improvement, park sales tax, and also public safety tax were also above the projections that we had for the month, and in turn, all three of those taxes are also year-to-date over the projected revenues that we previously had. Pages five, six, and seven, sorry, and eight are also related to sales tax. It's just a breakdown of the individual funds. I'd be happy to answer any questions on sales tax.
Questions?
And the last page that you have is the anticipated FY twenty-three estimated fund balance. Right now, the fund balance is estimated to be at fifteen point eighty-two percent. This particular report has not changed in quite some time because we haven't had any supplemental appropriations to take into consideration, but I do know that there is a bill being introduced this evening by the police department that would potentially affect this balance as we move forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Like you did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item B under seven, former council members, Dr. Tom Thomas Brant and Cliff Olson. You just introduce yourselves and welcome, back for being here.
I'm the Dr. Thomas Brant, this is Cliff Olson, Darryl Gordon was not able to make it this evening. I'll read something here if I may. Mayor and council members, my name is Dr. Tom Brant, and introduce, Darryl Gordon, Cliff Olson. We are former council members, all three of us. We are here to point out how much of an eyesore the former Ramada Inn building is. It's our feeling, feeling that the old Ramada Inn is more of a disgrace than the multiple houses on Capitol Avenue that were being demolished. Being on the highway, very exposed to the city, tourists. We understand that the owners of the Ramada Inn were turned down by TIF for tax relief and that they later acquired their contract through the housing authority with Mayor Hartsville. It's our opinion that despite what the contract says, the city, we feel, has an obligation to enforce the city code. It's an eyesore. The property is shameful with all the boarded windows, as well as a large amount of dirt pile, weeds, two or three truck trailers on the property, it has to be rat-infested. The property also is viewed from the highway, fifty-four, is visible to tourists. The city has those property owners, if their grass is too high, but lets the old Ramada Inn continue to looking horrific. Please see to it that the code enforcement department takes action on this matter. There's no, you know, with the courtyard, farmers didn't leave part of the hospital up to look disgraceful, they leveled the land in between the court, the motel and that red brick, now white brick building. I don't know of any other property that's commercially in this town that looks so disgraceful. And, uh, you have anything, Dan?
No, not really, other than if that's all one property with the Holiday Inn, when you condemn the, the Ramada Inn, close down the entire property and then it'll get taken care of pretty quick, my thought.
On the backside, there's, there is a gentleman, the name of David Aubrey, wrote a letter to the editor about the same problem, Ramada Inn, on the backside. And if we had a chance, we would like to enjoy, if we do refer to the code enforcement, that we have a chance to discuss that with them.
Okay.
Thank you, Aubrey.
Well, any comments, questions, from councilmen? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Takes us to item eight, announcements by mayor, don't really have any at this time. Admin committee is first, I don't know if Councilwoman Wiseman had, or Councilman Allen?
We had a meeting this Wednesday and discussed a few of the resolutions coming back from the Parks Commission to the city council for looking at tonight, and then our next meeting will be Wednesday, September sixth, I believe, is that, at seven-thirty in the morning.
Those will come to us on the twenty-first? Those will come to us on the twenty-first?
There's some, so we were getting discussed, we wanted some discussion back, we needed some more of the individual things that, on members that applied for certain commissions that we didn't get to look over this last meeting that weren't available to us, so we want to look at those before we give them the presentation to you and to the council board, Ron, from Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Just to add, I think Chair Wiseman was looking for maybe some of the background information that's generally received when the applicant comes before the administration. There was no objection to anything, it was just looking for that.
Budget committee, Councilman Hensley?
We have our budget committee kickoff meeting this Thursday at twelve o'clock noon in this room, and the first, which is a departure from how we've done it in the past, usually these meetings have been evening meetings. Uh, we're gonna try to make it a little bit easier perhaps for people to attend and do it during the day when they, when they might have time over lunch, but, so noon Thursday here, the first meeting will feature the mayor's presentation of the budget, FY twenty-four proposed budget highlights, revenue discussion, and five-year financial plan are the, are the big items. Uh, we have additional meetings coming up on August fourteenth and August seventeenth, also at noon here. We have department presentations. And these are, and these are public meetings, everyone's welcome to attend.
Okay, you want to follow up, finance, anything new? Public safety?
Uh, our next meeting will be August thirty-first, seven-thirty, Police Training Room.
All right, then, public works?
Our next meeting will be August tenth, in the council chambers at seven-thirty in the morning.
Thursday, prior to the budget meeting at noon?
Yes, correct. We hope to be done by then.
All right, Mr. Marash is saying this is doubtful. All right, any other announcements? All right, takes us to item nine, presentations from the gallery on specific bills, I think we have. All right, item A is stronghold leasing, housing development presentation. If you just identify yourself, welcome.
Oh, thank you, loaded. It's okay, nevermind. Good evening, I'm Darren Priest, I'm the executive director at Central Missouri Community Action, and with me is Pete Ramsell, he's with HRM Services, and they are our consultant and developer on the project I'm gonna discuss, and he'll be able to handle any technical questions that you might have. So, Central Missouri Community Action has offices at eleven oh five Southwest Boulevard and a Head Start Child Development Center at six oh five East Cherry. We've been serving Cole County for nearly sixty years now with programs like Head Start, Utility Assistance, our Weatherization Assistance Program, Housing Assistance, and Employment and Training Programs. We also own six multifamily housing developments across the eight counties that we serve, and we've developed a couple dozen single-family homes primarily in Boone County and Callaway County. Every three years, we do a community assessment, and the last one we did in 2020 clearly showed a priority for housing across the area that we serve. So in response to that, we've increased the number of homes we've weatherized, we've increased the amount of utility assistance we've had available, we've increased the number of housing vouchers that are available for, for assistance, and we've submitted, or we're working on plans and proposals to develop housing in Columbia, Fulton, and here in Jeff City, which I'll discuss further here in just a minute. Jefferson City went further than us by commissioning a housing study last year, right around this time, I think it was first presented to you, and that study clearly shows a need for additional housing across the spectrum, whether that's homeless shelters to high-income, you know, middle-income homes, and every single thing in between. We all have agreed, and I think you, you're very aware of that housing study, that there's a need for housing across the board. Our wheelhouse is workforce and affordable housing, so that takes me to this project that I'm gonna discuss tonight. You should have in front of you a nice, pretty color copy of a handout that shows information about, oh, great, we'll pull it up on the screen as well, so people online can see it. But basically, you know, so in response to the housing study, a couple of highlights that I think are worth noting in regards to this property. Growth in lower-wage sectors presents need for affordably housed, affordably priced housing. Four of the top five occupations pay under thirty-five thousand a year. The lowest-paying jobs in Jefferson City cannot afford home purchases at Jefferson City's median prices, and Jefferson City's labor market is largely driven by commuters coming into the city. So that's the backdrop for the proposal that we've got. This is the same exact proposal that we submitted to you last year. We've made tweaks to it, we increased the units, but in discussions with some of you, we've maintained the number of units so that there's enough CDBG disaster funding left so that another proposal can come forward next year. We know that the Missouri Housing Development Commission really is only going to support one application in a community in any given year, so we want to maximize that, sort of line up these projects so that we can support them one at a time. See if I can, oh, great. So this is the location, it's out on the west side of town, on the very far west border of the fourth ward. And so basically, I mean, this, this reflects what I was just talking about, that we, there's a tremendous need for housing. This particular project has forty units, and it breaks down eligibility in four different categories. So there's six units set aside for the most vulnerable population, those are folks that have income less than thirty percent. The next page gives you some context for that, to give you, show you what kind of income we have associated with those different various income levels. I go back. So at the bottom of this page, you can see the number of units that are designated for each income level. So most of the homes are for folks that are at the sixty percent area median income, so for a family of four, that's around forty thousand dollars of income. We also have units set aside for eighty percent area median income, which is truly workforce housing, and then we've got several units that are set aside for market rate units that anybody, anybody could apply for. Again, here are the income limits, just to give you some context for the type of income associated with each of these. Very quickly, this is the design we've established for each of the two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. I particularly want to highlight the community room. This will be a reinforced shelter so that next time a big tornado comes in, this property is gonna stand still and we can hold the tenants in there safely. It also has workstations with computers where we can tutor students that live, live there, and the property will also have a playground and a dog park. This is the layout of the lot as it stands, and with that, I'll leave my thirteen seconds for your questions or comments.
All right, questions, comments? Councilman Allen?
If approved, when will this take, start taking place? When will bids be let out or, and/or maybe stuff hit the ground?
Sure, so the applications are due at the end of September, the commission will make decisions in December, then we'll start working on a pile of paperwork, should be able to break, break ground next summer of twenty-four, and hopefully have the units complete by the school year of twenty-five, twenty-six.
All right.
Jump in if I...
How many of these, of these proposed forty units would be, you consider accessible to people with disabilities?
You want to answer that one?
Five percent.
Councilman Mealy, then Councilman Schwartz?
The, uh, the land that this proposed housing would, would be on the, is the price of that acquisition set, or is it, I mean, can it fluctuate?
It's set.
Okay.
We've got an option, we agree to the price. It's the same price that we agreed to last year.
Well, that's good.
Councilman Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. So I wasn't here last year, I'm moving into this, so I have some maybe rudimentary questions, but something that I feel like I need to know before we vote on it, so what, what is your role in this? Are you the project manager, or are you the developer, or do you hire a developer?
So we'll be the owner. We have hired a developer and consultant that's helping us with the application process. We will be providing services on site and we'll hire management to manage the property. So our sort of supportive services will be all of those programs I described earlier and coaching with the tenants to make sure that they're productive members of the community.
Can you tell us who the developer is, or is that...
It's HRM Services.
Where are they?
St. West, Washington, Missouri.
How many, so you said two of the forty will be ADA accessible?
Yeah.
I'm doing my math right?
Yes.
How many are section A?
None.
Zero?
There's a certain number of thirty percent units in there, special needs units. If we had vouchers, we would probably use vouchers to help those people, but just with the program, with the tax credit program and with financing, there is no project-based rental assistance. So everybody knows, those thirty percent people could apply, and if they apply, get voucher, a section A voucher.
How long have you, is this gonna be the only one you will own, or do you own more, or had...
No, this will be our, yeah, this will be our seventh light project.
How's that doing?
Great, I mean, we're in our twenty-year compliance period on several of them. One of them up in Centralia, we actually just submitted a renovation grant, so we're rehabbing all of those, all of those properties to make sure that they're the highest quality. Bo West did a great presentation at the Housing Task Force meeting last week where he talked about, you know, the regulatory environment, these are heavily monitored, heavily regulated to make sure that the, both the quality of the physical facility is high, high quality, but also make sure that the tenants are, are doing their part as well.
If I may speak to that just, just for a moment, I spent fifteen years at the Missouri Housing Development Commission, I ran the tax credit program, I eventually became the executive director. My one rule, all the developers, if you don't take, take care of what you have, you won't get another one. That club is still there, hangs on the wall, actually. They inspect every year, we do the national reports that are submitted to them every year, so we're, we're well governed and supervised, and that thread is there. Either take care of what you got, or you don't get another one. We're currently managing probably twenty-four hundred units, tax credit.
Thank you.
Councilman Allen?
Just two questions, the five percent, is that a minimum that you have to have on for regulations? So that's what, two, two units or something like that? All right, and then, are, you all, if I remember, I just, and I'm new with Councilman Schwartz, a couple of other ones, is there a project you're gonna be, you're doing on Sixth Street somewhere next to the President's?
Yeah.
On that, is that...
Totally, totally separate from this, we are...
That's another project you're, is that started yet, or...
No, no, we're acquiring, acquiring some properties, we'd like to apply for the other component of the CDBG disaster funds to do some down payment assistance on those single-family homes.
What will, you know what that...
I, I don't.
That was, I, I knew that was one of the first ones at the, one of the meetings we had at, when did that would start?
That's, that is really up in the air still.
Councilman Spencer?
If you'll give me the liberty, I've got a few questions here, so, I think there's a flyer that states you have Housing Choice voucher program, helping those in need to get signed up for Section A. So how many clients does CMCA sign up to the Housing Choice voucher program each month?
Across six counties, we have four hundred and fifty vouchers.
I've been contacted by a couple of people in the housing industry here in Jeff City that they, and this is the question I related to you Saturday, so I'd like you to say it, probably to kind of calm these fears here, that, that they are receiving several calls on a monthly basis from prospective tenants who are stating that they've been enrolled in the Housing Choice voucher program in Columbia, but then are directed to find housing here in Jefferson City. So why would we be encouraging those who live and work in Columbia to find housing in Jefferson City, and those who live in Jefferson City are having difficulties finding housing?
Right, as I mentioned, we provide Housing Choice voucher in six counties, we do not provide that service in Columbia, so the Columbia Housing Authority provides all the vouchers from Boone County, we, we do not have any of those, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that.
So, but the other counties might be eligible to come down here, I mean...
Yeah, when we, when we establish a voucher, they can use that anywhere.
And does CMCA receive any federal subsidies, or is there any financial incentives gained when you find permanent housing for homeless or at-risk homeless individuals?
There, I'm not sure how to answer that, we, we don't receive an incentive for that, that's part of our programming, to help people enroll and find housing that's, that they can afford.
So your funding's not based on how many people go into the program are successful?
No.
Will this development be on the tax rolls?
Yes.
And will we be using local contractors?
Yes.
Thank you.
We will have a general contractor, I, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm... We will have a general contractor, I, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm, giving you the correct information and all the picture. There'll be a general contractor that's very, very familiar with MHDC, the procedure, the dispersing, and the, most of the stuff will be there. And we make that commitment to you, and we make the general contractor follow through with it.
Great, thank you so much.
Councilman Schwartz.
Just one follow-up. So is the rent you charge based on some formula of either income or, or something like that?
Right, so, so when they apply for housing here at Stronghold Landing, hopefully in a couple of years, we verify their income, and, and then we can assign them to a unit based on their income level.
What happens if the cost of ownership increases? Can you increase the rent?
We can, we can request a rent increase from the Missouri Housing Development Commission. Usually it's a few dollars at a time, but, but we can do that. They're, they're pretty, they're pretty sensitive to, you know, out pricing people out of the market, but it is possible those rents would go up.
So for instance, if there's a significant tax levy increase, that would be something maybe you would look at, passing on to the renter?
Possibly, that, we've got a 15-year cash flow analysis that, you know, at current rents, we're, we're good, we've got, you know, maintenance reserves, we've got operating reserves, and, and we're in good shape. So for 15 years, I don't, unless it was, I mean, I don't know what you're talking about, unless it was really significant, we're in a pretty good position the next 15 years.
That is something you could potentially do?
Yes.
If there's unforeseen vote, or whatever else causes property values to?
We can apply for rent increases, yes.
Thank you.
All right, seen another questions, we've got some other individuals, and then we'll go back to the resolution.
Thank you.
Adam Nelson. If you could just state your name again when you get to the microphone, appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Nelson Otto, and I live at 1025 Monroe Street. As a resident and property owner, I would like to thank Jack Deegan and the rest of the public, were committees who voted no on making Monroe Street two-way. Most of us living in the area affected, see no need for it. Since the beginning, the reason why and how it would be paid for have constantly changed. First, it was the hospital, which was doing this to help the poor, then it was because of the tornado that the city needed a better route to the hospital. It would be paid for by federal funding from the tornado recovery. With COVID, it again was stated that it would increase the traffic to the hospital, and even stated that it, that in the application for federal, our COVID funding. In April this year, property owners received a letter from Melva Fast and the South Side Munichburg CDC Housing Committee. This letter once again stated that this was due to the tornado. The letter basically states that they were offering a compromise to protect our homes by removing the parking on Monroe Street, when, when columnist Fast explained that all of our homes would be torn down unless we gave up the street parking. Next was editorial by the editor of the News Tribune, Gary Castor, that a sales tax was to pay for it, and was to create a gateway to the old Munichburg area. None of the concepts made any sense as traffic already goes to the hospital, and any of the plans to widen or remove parking would not only be pointless, but a massive problem for the residents that have no driveways, and an inconvenience for those that do, as it would prevent visitors, lawn care companies, deliveries, and more from parking on the street. The worst part of, of this was that many renters were never included in any of these plans or discussions, as they too would be affected by the changes. Some of the rental properties were referred to as party houses, and were not worthy of concern. Those houses had members with children living there. The question of making Monroe a gateway to the old Munichburg area makes no sense, as the old Munichburg area already has many main routes that give much better access. Many of us were under the impression that the city was going to make the street two-way no matter what. When I spoke with Tia from the city, I got the impression no discussion would be made until 2025, and the members of the city would set up an area for us to meet and explain the plan, so we could have input. I told Tia at the time that we really don't need this, but if the city is absolutely set on making Monroe two-way, then taking our homes or taking away street parking were not good options. We talked about the retaining wall plan, but still, I and many residents do not see a logical reason for making the street two-way. So thank you again for voting no, saving taxpayer money and protecting the residents.
I apologize for getting your name backwards.
It's all right.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Just introduce yourself.
Thank you, my name is Steve Viley, I live at 1025 Adams Street, and I guess I am here tonight to present a different point of view than the one you just heard. I have lived in this area for about 16 years, and I support the idea of, of the two-way on Monroe Street. I think it's a, a good thing for the area. The only through street between the hospital and JC High has really been Adams Street, and it doesn't go all the way through. So you come up from Stadium, we get a lot of traffic coming up Adams Street, up that hill from Stadium, and then cresting it at Woodlawn, which is where I live, the corner of Woodlawn and Adams Street, and then sailing down Adams. And they really do sail. We have people chugging up that hill, and they've got the pedal to the metal, and then they cross the hill and coast down Adams Street. It would, would be very nice, I believe, to have that throughway on Monroe Street. It's very nice near the hospital now, and I think, you know, we've got the, you know, that space in between Dunkland and the hospital that needs to be improved. So I, I do think it would be a good thing for the neighborhood. I, I think many neighbors do support the idea of having that two-way. But the other reason I'd like to suggest to you that it needs to happen is because it was approved, the package that went before the voters, it was approved by the city council by vote of eight-two. It then went before the voters of, of the city, and it was approved in Ward Two, which is where it's situated, by 70%. But it was approved overall, the package, by the city itself, by nearly 73% of the vote. So it had good support. The other thing that I'd like to suggest to you, it's very important for the city to maintain the credibility of the city, the accountability of the city, to go through with what you proposed. You put a package together, it was, it was considered by the voters, it was overwhelmingly approved. And I think we've seen over the years, every five years, I believe, is when the package comes up, and, and it's received widespread, widespread support for decades now. Because the city puts together a good package, you tell the people what's going to be in it, they vote on it, and every five years, they have shown their support for what you've done. So I urge you for the credibility of the city and the accountability to, to continue that. Do what you said you were going to do, and I urge you to support the idea of continuing the plan to make Monroe a two-way street.
Thank you.
Quests? Councilman Al.
Mr. Al, thank you for showing up and all that. So I, getting this study back, was that pre-tornado and all that, that the, like, the, the study was done with, do you know, in 2017-ish or 2018 or somewhere in that area?
Yeah, I wasn't involved, so I really don't, couldn't.
I, I was, I would be curious now, just to look at what the traffic flow is now that there's ballfields there, and what the, you know, what people are doing now. I did venture over there the following Sunday, and there was a team from Arkansas playing, so I stopped and talked to people on how they got in there, and what their plans were, and, you know, if they were staying, eating, how they were going about getting where they were, were going, and, you know, with the Waze app and Google and all that stuff, a lot of them had taken how they came in from, by Lincoln on Stadium, and they would take Stadium over to where the Missouri Boulevard was. So I just, for my things, I was just curious on how, how people move about that area. I know that, I don't know what part of Adams you were going, but, you know, they make that, they made that little crosswalk there that, if you, if you're not paying attention, you hit that crosswalk across from where the Chase football field is and all that going in there. I didn't know if you meant that way coming up the hill, or?
No, I meant.
Roland Street coming up?
You're talking about on Jackson, I think, where that speed bump is, by the ballfield, by the.
I thought that was Adams I was driving on today.
But I'm talking Adams, coming up the hill, it's, you know, from Stadium on up to Woodlawn, and it, it's like this, and people, they gun it, and then they come over the hill, and, so we've had a lot of problems with that. In fact, we've come to the council asking for speed bumps, those were denied, but.
Adams Street, senior living home or something, right, is that, is that general area?
Say that again, please.
The, the assisted living area, that's Adams?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's where that nursing home is. And by the way, we do thank you, the council and the mayor, supported new sidewalks and curbs and gutters along Adams Street, from Dunkland to, I think, Stadium. That's been a great improvement, we really appreciate that. And I think this, this two-way situation on Monroe would also go a long way to improve the neighborhood. And you're right, you know, with the new ballfields, new soccer fields, new baseball fields, there is more traffic in the area, and I think it would be helpful to the city to, to follow through and make this improvement.
Are you done, Councilman Al?
I'm done, thank you, thank you, Millie.
In your estimation, living on Adams Street and being close to Monroe, that is one-way, if Monroe would become two-way, you know, what are your feelings about the alleviation of, of large amounts of traffic on your road, and then maybe Madison Street neighboring streets, and how that would benefit you?
I, I suspect it would alleviate traffic going on Adams, because Adams is not a through street, you know, it does end at Dunkland, so you come up Stadium, but you, it's a dead end at Dunkland, so you either got to drive on that. But I think with it going through from Stadium to the expressway on Monroe, I think that would be very helpful to the, to the city, and, and hopefully alleviate the traffic problems we've had on Adams Street.
Do you think there's a little bit of a safety component to it?
Oh, definitely, on Adams, I mean, we've, we've had all kinds of, you know, concerns about traffic, number one, and speeding traffic, you know? And, you know, the studies, I know the staff does their studies, and traffic counts and all that, and say we, you know, they don't go that fast, but boy, when you're sitting there in your living room, and they come zooming up properly, which happens a lot, I really think, you know, and, and it's so nice with Monroe, what's been done, right behind the hospital there, you know, from Stadium, coming up, that's, that's a great improvement that was made. Continuing that on down on Monroe, I think would be a good thing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Plummer. Welcome, again, if you'd introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, members of the council, I'm Gary Plummer, I work for Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce at 213 Adams, and I'm here to speak on the Stronghold Landing project, okay? So many of you know that the chamber has been highly focused on the housing issue in recent years. We see it as a workforce development issue, which is stifling our ability to attract and fill good-paying jobs in our community. Long-term, we think the housing situation is a big component about how do we sustain manageable growth of our community and our population over time. And I'm speaking today on behalf of over 800 members of the chamber. We also have had two groups that have been very involved in this conversation, about 25 members of the Manufacturers Roundtable, and 40 public and private partners in a group we call the Workforce Coalition, which is a joint venture between the chamber and JC Rep. We appreciate the fact that, I think, almost everybody here on the council attended a state-of-the-city, a county event here in our community in April. We heard a lot from representatives from the business community situation. I think we shed a lot of light on that, on the urgency of that issue in our community. We want to be on the record supporting the Stronghold Landing project. Our belief is that central Missouri community action and their developer partner has a great deal of expertise in this area. They are a great regional service provider, including the Cole County Family Resource Center, and their head start to Child Development Center here in Jefferson City. So the chamber wants to ask everybody here on the council to consider this proposal, and hopefully find the ability to support the Stronghold Landing project. Thank you.
Thank you, questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kalau. Welcome.
Thank you.
Just introduce yourself again, please.
Mal Kalau, I live on the east side. I left out a few fires for selected people on yellow paper. That was designed to get your attention. If it didn't, okay, I'll give you one. Councilman Ayers and I have had a couple of really extended conversations, and he's got a lot of great ideas, but I continue to stimulate him to bring us more ideas. I won't ask you to share any of them, or I might get shot here in town, and, well, I wanted just a couple things. I moved to Jefferson City with my family 12 years ago. At the time, we found a nice home on the east side, we still have it, it's paid for. I will tell you that I'm guilty of spending quite a bit of money for landscaping, which I have let get just as old as I am. And that's a sort of a problem when you're almost going to be 80 years old, and you don't have the energy to clean up that landscaping that you spent so much money for. Now, I'm also known, Councilman Ayers, that I spend a lot of time talking. I'll try to cut that short, I only got three minutes, that's fine. I just want to say that when we first moved here, we liked the idea of coming in underneath gap region and parking in their new parking area. That only lasted five or six years, until we decided they needed that area. But it was nice, and the recent work on Monroe Street has been good. All I will tell you is this, my wife, and myself, and in general, a lot of people think that Monroe Street needs to be fixed. It is not fixed in its current condition. And I'm just going to say, it's up to the city, and all of their strengths and weaknesses to get that done. I don't think we should send our money outside of the central core of the city until we get the core of the city done. That's all I want to say on that. I'm going to backline and say something, my Regless Morning's paper, luckily, I've got something on here about Lincoln. If you haven't been around Lincoln recently, you're missing something on a Saturday, or any other time. The new president in Lincoln is not wasting any time. Unlike the county and the city, he is kicking butt. I don't know about taking names, but he's doing something there. So they are making us look rather ancient, like me. There's nothing I can do about it, but there's something you can do about your city, my city. So think long-term, and as I told Councilman the other day on the phone, think outside the box. I gave him an idea which he doesn't want to share with you for the prison. I've been to the prison, I've toured the prison, I like the prison, but I'm not sure we can afford it. I'm not sure we need it. That's an aside from Monroe Street, but it's an example of something that could, we could spend a lot of money on, and wouldn't come out ahead money-wise. So far, we spent a lot of labor on agreements here and agreements there, and people want to do this, and they want to do that, and we're at zero, near as I can tell. And I'm sure, I, I kind of think we should stay at zero, and look at a different approach, and clean that slate off, and let's do something different. We'll talk about it later. off, and let's do something different. We'll talk about it later. Okay, I've got forty minutes left. What else? I mentioned to you about Lincoln. The real reason I put this together, I was going to do a different letter to the editor than I have. I like to write letters to the editor, but I'm no good at it. I'm too old. I got a central tremor, can't write, but I've got an Apple keyboard and I can dictate to that. But it doesn't mean I want to do it, because I tell the, the truth where it is. The housing situation, as I have attributed, when you read down on the yellow sheet or one of these sheets, I have a couple more if you didn't get one, we like to have the states supplementing our money. That's it. Thank you. I know you'll read this and, uh, write lots of letters. Have a great evening and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. Ms. Allen. Welcome.
Yeah, could you just?
Identify yourself.
Good evening. I'm Julie Allen. Thank you, council members and members. I just want to, I really can't be any more eloquent than the individuals before me, and I'm sure that will come after me, supporting the housing project. It is in Ward Four, which I live in Ward Four, and I know, we all know the dire need we have for housing. So, I'm really happy that you're considering it and hopeful that the resolution to support it will pass and it will, it will get the, the tax credit help that it needs. Also on Monroe Street, I can't be more eloquent than the few that have come before me in relation to supporting it. Because it was passed, the voters did vote on it. And, um, things have gotten more expensive. I do understand that. So, that's the part of figuring it out, that you figure out how you're going to afford and what, what you need. But the commitment is there. The voters did approve it overwhelmingly. And it's important for the, for businesses. The many different facilities are there, including the hospital. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Donna Dietz. Good evening.
Donna Dietz, seven-twenty East High Street. And tonight, I'm wearing my East Side Business Association hat. Um, the East Side Business Association met on Friday, and during that meeting, we passed a resolution concerning Monroe Street. And I'd like to read that to you. But we did have one question, and I might direct it to Ryan if, if possible. In parliamentary procedure, because the council voted in favor of this, of this, uh, development on Monroe Street and Public Works and all did the same thing several times in several different ways, uh, can the Public Works Committee come up and rescind that without a formal vote to actually rescind what they voted on before?
I understand the question. Um, the Public Works Committee can't overrule the city council, if that's what you're asking.
Okay.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
And the Public Works Committee had previously supported the whole development in their votes, and now they're coming back. Did they vote to rescind and did they follow appropriate parliamentary procedures all?
That they did follow appropriate procedure and then had a vote to rescind.
Okay. On behalf of the East Side Business Association, uh, we do have a resolution, whereas no other city, no other area of Jefferson City has as many institutions providing vital services to Jefferson City citizens, yet access and traffic flow in this community is more restricted than, than in any other. And whereas the citizens of Jefferson City voted to fund reconstruction of Monroe Street to make it two-way with associated improvements as part of the half-cent capital improvement sales tax H, which was intended to provide funding for capital improvement projects, whereas Monroe Street was listed as a project within the joint city-county category of sales tax H. And although we do understand that it may not have been listed specifically on the voting form that people voted on, every piece of advertisement, this is an example of it, listed that in, as one of the benefits. Whereas this proposed project is supported by the East Side Association, be it resolved that the East Side Business Association of Jefferson City, Missouri supports and encourages the city of Jefferson to allocate the funding, as denoted in sales tax H, for the reconstruction and widening of Monroe Street between Woodlawn and Acheson Street. And it's signed by our president, Stephanie Lang.
Thank you. Mayor. Spencer.
Any somebody?
Sorry.
That's okay. Um, you referenced that this was a listed project in the, are you aware that Wildwood Extension was also a listed project?
There were a variety of projects. But this was one that was specifically listed and advertised, and it's one that was voted on.
Same as Wildwood?
Probably.
Thank you.
Officer Millie? Can we just add for the record, so for all?
I'm sorry.
There's pots of money for each project, right? The Monroe doesn't take away from Wildwood.
Right, right. Yeah, the, I, and I want to say it was three million five hundred or something that was allocated specifically for the Monroe project. And development had started taking place, and it had been discussed in several council meetings and voted on upon. And that's what we're supporting, is what the council said they were going to do, what the sales tax proposition set up was going to do, and what it would do for this city and for the businesses and activities around it.
Question for you, Ms. Dietz.
Sure.
You think that if, when, when projects that have been planned for multiple years and a lot of times projects like this have to have multiple-year plan?
Right.
Council generally is a slow process. And there's reasons for that, you know, staff at these things, there's public engagement, you know, we want to make sure it's, we're doing the right thing for the community. Do you, do you think that turning kind of on a dime puts us in an environment where maybe businesses or investors are not going to know how to navigate?
Well, we've been through that before in other projects that we need to have something to look forward to, to know how to go about it. Uh, what was proposed on Monroe Street was certainly going to benefit the school district when they went to buy that property along Jackson Street and take over where the tornado had hit and all. And I know it's affecting Capital Region and some of the plans that they have to do and their development. And as a small business owner and a member of that East Side Business Association, it's important that we have something to plan for. Otherwise, we're not going to be able to develop our own businesses and keep in progress. Um, as Mayor Fitzwater has said, we want to see the city progress. We want to see the city grow in both, uh, the growth of its businesses, the growth of its population. And we can't do that unless we know what's coming. And this was something that was planned, that was designed, and they started working on. And that's what we thought was happening. And that's what we wanted to go with.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Anything else before I go back?
Officer Schwartz.
Hey.
Cameron.
Who produced the, uh, you said you had a campaign sheet there that listed progress?
Uh-huh.
Who produced that?
Couple websites and I shouldn't list them down. I'll give it to one of them that was put out.
I can give this to you.
Are you a campaign material?
Yeah, it was campaign material. It's just one that we, you know, was able to get, was still had and could print out.
Officer Schwartz, I know, I know Ken Hussey was chair of that campaign back there. I'm not sure who else was on the campaign. Maybe Ron knows?
And I, and if you go back, I can even have my computer sitting back there and I can pull up all the newspaper articles and everything else that were quoted, that this was one of the projects that would be developed.
So I guess this question's for Ryan. When this body passes a resolution, is it, is it binding by any stretch to code or ordinance or anything?
Resolution is not a law that is of lasting, uh, effect. Resolutions are generally one-time instructions. Uh, is probably the best way to understand it. And so, um, resolution, when passed, will have a continuing effect for a topic that it addresses. That would prevent a, a change, um, in direction by the same body that passed the resolution. So if a resolution could keep repeating resolution, if, if certain steps changes, certain votes change.
So action by this council now to supersede the resolution that was passed by a former council?
Yeah.
They do it nationally all the time.
Well, and the resolution that was passed, since we've established it had no binding effect of law. It was not included in the ballot language.
It, it can't be included in the ballot language. The ballot language is statutory.
So when the money gets passed and sales takes, sales and tax H, that money comes to the city, and then who determines how it gets spent?
City council.
And is there a lot of people on this council now that weren't on the council that approved that resolution?
There is.
Thank you, Mayor. Just comment.
Officer Western.
I just commented, the resolution for H was, was passed May of, May of twenty-twenty-one. And it had, had attached the, the proposed city-county projects. And I'm part of Councilman West.
Officer Schwartz.
When did the tax go into effect, the new tax? I defer to. Was it March or this year?
April twenty-twenty-two.
April of twenty-twenty-two?
Yeah, approved in August of twenty-one, like in effect April twenty-two.
So it's been in effect for over a year?
Yes.
And nothing has been done to do the two-lane yet?
I'm going to have to defer to the Public Works Department.
Yeah, just discussion at the committee level and, and obviously Tia had some meetings with the residents.
What was, what was the holdup from the former administration?
Uh, I, I don't know if there's a holdup. It was just getting, uh, project like this takes some time to develop, certainly.
A year?
Well, with other projects, certainly it couldn't, uh, lag multiple years. It's just a priority unless we go with outside design, staff, and that just increases project costs. So we try to step through them, uh, in a methodical order, but try to work with them within that five-year period, certainly.
You said you spoke to residents?
I think, uh, we've had some public meetings. I brought David Maggie along tonight, our city engineer. I think we've had some, uh, meetings with the residents, kind of just, get their ideas, their initial concept ideas. And then that was, uh, multiple ideas were discussed. I think I just looked it up back in March, uh, with the committee at that time for various options. And none of them were settled on at the time necessarily.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time for me to keep going or?
Mr. Mayor. Can I point out one thing in regards to the funds that are listed on that, uh, that resolution that was passed? One of the other holdups could very likely be cash flow, because there would be a five-year iteration that covers that tax. And so there are many things within that tax that are specified. So cash flow could pose a problem for the lag on starting this particular project as well.
Did you have additional questions?
Well, I mean, I have a lot of, I was a linucular.
We'll probably address them when the resolution comes up. Let the citizens make their comments. Did you have a comment from Ms. Dietz?
Uh, just a general comment. I think COVID may have played a part in, um, you know, some projects. You know, we know that that kind of stopped everything. So, just putting that out there. I did have a question for the counselor. Um, how long have you worked for the city of Jefferson?
It'll be seven years next month.
And when plans come through the process and they start with city staff, there's public engagement, and there's drafting of plans, they go to committee and then they go to council, how often in your seven years do these plans just stop? Is it frequent or infrequent?
Say it's, it's hard to give a categorization. It's, it's happened before. It gets kind of the best way I can.
Yeah. Is it often or?
It's, no, I wouldn't say it's often.
I mean, I, I think, you know, I can get into the procedural, you know, pieces of this and historical context of how local governments govern its words and things like that when we talk about the resolution.
All right. I've been very generous. We're, we're going to bring us back into allowing citizens to make their comments. If you have questions directly to them, that is fine. Then we will go into the resolutions. Mr. Calvaruso, I believe you're next.
Hello, Mayor.
How are you?
City council, thank you. My name's Gaspar Calvaruso, um, three-five-five-one Antietam Court. I'm the president of Capital Region Medical Center. Um, I'm here to advocate for a two-lane of Monroe Street. Um, and, and really not much more than a lot of the other folks that have already stepped up here. There's a lot of good reasons for this particular road to be two-way. But, um, I wanted to provide a little bit of context, uh, from a Capital Region perspective. I arrived in Jefferson City in, uh, I started my job in September of twenty-fourteen. Uh, at that point in time, there was a project on its way, which was basically the addition that is right there on Madison Street. Um, that addition increased the size of Capital Region by about a third. Um, it also brought about a hundred and twenty thousand visits, uh, to the hospital. It's primarily a medical office building. It has physical therapy as well, uh, and some other, uh, uh, services. When I arrived in twenty-fourteen, uh, what was conveyed to me from Ed Farnsworth and some of the other leadership is that there was a discussion that was going on with city leadership about two-way Monroe, um, in direct kind of, uh, I guess, relation to our investment. And that was a forty-million-dollar investment. Uh, infrastructure around the hospital is older. Uh, we are in Old Munichburg. We are in South Side. We're proud to be in the South Side. Uh, at the time, St. Mary's was moved, in the process of moving, we had no intentions of moving. Now, a lot of infrastructure on Mission Drive, uh, not much in our area. We went, went through with the project, and about a year later, I presented to my board the idea of doing a study, um, which, with H-three, which has now become the, um, historic South Side Old Munichburg Neighborhood Plan. Um, my previous post was in St. Charles, Missouri. I was the president of St. Joseph Health Center in, uh, St. Charles. And it's a very similar area to where Capital Region is, in the sense that a lot of, um, older, um, community, a lot of kind of help from a roads perspective, from a revitalization perspective. And we had worked with that H-three group there. Um, and probably the crown jewel of what we did was, uh, work with the city of St. Charles to redo First Capitol from the Highway seventy all the way up to the hospital. And if you're familiar with that area, you know what it looks like today. So, uh, we went through a series of shreds, engagement with, uh, the community, worked with the city, uh, to develop a plan, not only about this, about, um, two-way Monroe, but what it would take to really revitalize Old Munichburg. And as probably some of you have read through that, there's probably about twelve big key kind of areas, components of, uh, really trying to revitalize it. Uh, it also, uh, was, uh, kind of established with the sense that this isn't going to happen overnight, um, that this was something that was going to take years and years and years, and that we were going to chip away at it. Since that time, there's been a number of accomplishments. We have a CDC, uh, Community Development Corporation, uh, made up of community members and, uh, city officials, as well as, uh, some business leaders in the area, working on things like housing and infrastructure, um, and safety. Um, we've had success in safety. Chief Weldy has really been engaged in that process. We've seen some of that, those numbers go down. The city staff, Rachel Sezny, works with us as well. We've seen really big wins with the adoption of some of the code enforcement in that area. And the city council approved that, uh, that, uh, plan many, many years ago. So, um, we are, are very, very, I guess, interested in this being moved forward. So we are very, very, I guess, interested in this being moved forward. I want to say on behalf of Capital Region and myself, I've spoken to a number of you, you know, I don't envy your jobs. You have a lot of different choices that you need to make and that's what your job is, is to try to make the best choices. But I'm advocating that you don't abandon this project. It's important to Capital Region. We believe it's important to Old Munichburg. It would be one of the only connectors between Stadium and 50. And we found out during the tornado that that was a difficult way to kind of traverse. And I'll stop there with three seconds left.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Slaughter. Welcome.
Kim Slaughter. Wait for my timer. Good evening. My name's Kim Slaughter. And I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the Monroe Street expansion. Not just as a resident and taxpayer of Jefferson City, but as an impacted business owner and real estate investor in the affected area. My husband and I, Tyler, wear several small business hats. The one we're most known for is our dental office, which now is almost 10 years old and has been growing every year. For that reason, in 2019, we purchased 600 Monroe Street in order to expand our ability to serve the community's dental needs. Finally, we relocated in 2021, thanks to COVID, among other things. You may know this 13,000 square foot hillside building built by the Gordon Brothers across Highway 50 from the Miller Performing Arts Center. Not only is our dental business housed there, but also our other tenants such as CASA, Core Appointed Special Advocates. They're an agency that advocates for children in our local foster care system. Our notable neighbors, 601 Monroe, which is where NCR, Septagon, and newly Bartlett and West Engineering Firm call home. In addition to our Monroe Street building, we also invested in a 6,000 square foot commercial building on Dunklin, about a half a block from the Monroe intersection, and it's just a couple of blocks down from the Atchison Cross Street. You may be surprised to know that this was not enough. We also decided to pursue several historic homes, specifically 1910, 1925, and another 1925, that were located in between our two commercial buildings. Over the last year, we've spent a lot of sweat, tears, and money trying to renovate and save them from out-of-state landlords or out-of-area landlords who were letting them go by the wayside. These are located almost directly across the street from Central Dairy. So we did all that in an effort to keep the neighborhood alive and well. So I come to you as someone who drives down Monroe at least twice a day there and back, as someone who owes the bank quite a bit of money in order to save the buildings surrounding us in Old Munichburg. As someone who spends a lot of time managing these properties and our dental office, where we definitely know about the traffic that comes and goes on Monroe because, I mean, just our business alone brings up to 50 patients a day to our practice at 600 Monroe Street. But I want to say thank you for your continued support of Phase 1 improvements, specifically the bluff that is breaking off next to our driveway for our business and our other tenants. Since purchasing the building, I've reached out to the city several times to ensure that improvements were on its way. And you're well aware, not only is the falling rock dangerous, but there, the sidewalk there has been barricaded for longer than I have, can remember. The city said improvements were coming and to be patient. So I believe that it's worth noting that the remaining slices of sidewalk along the barricades there on the 600 block hasn't been kept up with, letting large cracks develop and plants grow make even what sidewalk remains unsafe and unusable too. Clearly, we know this whole scenario is unfortunate when it comes to accessibility for those with mobility needs. And as I hope you know, that many people who live between downtown and Capital Region are without reliable vehicles and are sidewalk users. So again, I thank you for bringing attention to this issue and I applaud the city's efforts to move forward with Phase 1. I just want to make sure that that was addressed tonight as well. But as an impacted business owner and a couple who uses the Monroe Street many, many times each and every day, we're disappointed to hear about the lack of support for Phase 2 of Monroe Street improvement, specifically Woodlawn to Atchison, which is just a couple of blocks down from our buildings, as I previously mentioned. For such large decisions to be made by folks who just had to make a special effort to drive our neighborhood, who claim that it isn't used and is a waste of money without any kind of traffic studies or data to support this, is disappointing. Infrastructure improvements on Monroe were part of why we chose that location for our business and following investments. Sure, many other streets in town also need improvements, as they always, always will. But the city's mechanisms and procedures that were already used to decide that this was a necessary taxpayer-approved improvement. Large and small businesses along the route are ready to continue to invest and grow as infrastructure allows. So I ask council to please reconsider pushing Phase 2 forward as previously approved and to do their due diligence to study the impact of their decisions on an area where they likely do not sleep, do not eat, and do not have their livelihoods. I assure you that the wonkiness of Monroe Street is what kept it from being used as much as Madison. But again, it would provide a more ideal and direct way to access different portions of town. I have eight seconds, so thank you. And I'm available to assist in any part of this discussion as an impacted person. I did it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Thanks for being here.
My pleasure.
I apologize. We have a Steve, I'm not sure, the last name, Eric Camps. He'll tell us who it is. Thanks for being here. Go back to fall.
I'm not even going to try. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Steve Sokoloff. I've lived here in Jefferson City for about eight years. And prior to that, I was in Southeast, lived in Southeast Missouri, been involved in municipal government down there, was city attorney for four, for three different cities at various times. And so I'm extremely cognizant of the responsibilities of city government to the voters. I want to just hit a couple, reiterate a couple of high spots. Most of these points were made. But I would observe that it is important when a commitment is made to the voters about activities that are going to be undertaken and the voters relying on the representations that are made in campaigning for that vote do in fact pass that authorization. There is an obligation on the part of the city, not necessarily a legal one, but a moral one, to follow through with those promises made. Second, I would point out that Monroe Street is the only, or would if this is done, the only two-way thoroughfare between Stadium and downtown, between Jefferson Lafayette. That's a pretty big area of town. With the addition of the new high school soccer and baseball fields in that area, that just will increase the traffic. I've heard suggested there's not much traffic on there. And one of the reasons why there's not much traffic on there is because it's very inconvenient to try and go down, turn, go a block over, go down, turn, come a block back. I also think that it's an unfortunate entrance to an area of town where you've got sidewalks blocked off because the block adjoining that street is collapsing. There's been nothing to maintain that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Brad Bates, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, seeing members of the council, thank you for the opportunity. Listening to everyone, I realize that I probably am the least qualified to be addressing the group, but I thank you for the opportunity anyway. So my name is Brad Bates. I'm a, I live at 2305 Express View Drive. But I do have a property on Union Street. And as I was listening to everyone, and I won't sawdust as to what has already been said, there are a couple of things I'd just like to bring up for consideration, is this area is really a neat area. And because I have purchased a property there, I've spent more time in it than I had previously. But my generation, when I was growing up, our goals were to have a corner lot, an acre lot with a John Deere mower. And that was considered success for my generation. And I think a lot of the younger generation now, their goals are a little shifted that they want walkable communities. They want areas where everything is within walking distance. And I look at this area of the Old Munichburg, where you could have employment at Capital Region under Mr. Calvaruso. You have new athletic facilities. You have a new STEM school that's going in. And I look at it and I think it's just a little infrastructure and a supermarket. And you've got something that is, is going to be the definition of what revitalization is. So it's really a neat opportunity. So I just wanted to bring that perspective to perhaps think about that we've got something that could be a real jewel that we can all be very proud of. And of course, with revitalization, you have a lot of crime rates, you have more accessibility, you have more redevelopment. It just, it's a nice area. And the only other comment I have, I'll finish up way before my five minutes, is someone had mentioned that, well, there's, there's not as much traffic flow. And that's true. But as I go over there a lot, that's because it's, it's so a discombobulated process to travel on it. I was lucky enough to be, to serve on the Parks Commission for a number of years. And when we were looking at some of the parks we were going to do, one of them was Community Park. And the question was brought up, and I think it was me that made this stupid statement. I said, are we going to do that one? I mean, we don't have any use of that park. And the consultant said, you don't have any use because the park is terrible. And under their leadership, we now have a tremendous destination-type park at Community Park. And for those of us that have a few years on them, I would venture to say that 10 years ago, none of us can imagine the success that's happening at that park. But the person that was the consultant said, we have over 7,000 people within a one-mile radius of that park. And now it's the most utilized park in the system. So I think there is a little correlation between that park and investing in the infrastructure that is Monroe Street. So I just wanted to make that correlation, be happy to answer any questions, and thank you guys for your service.
Thanks for being with us. Mr. Mahalovich, welcome back.
Hey, to tell this council this, but I had a full head of hair before I entered the council. So this is what you got to look forward to. It's not a pretty sight. No, I'm Rick Mahalovich, 1704 Delta Place, Ward 2. One of the pleasures I have, and I want to, want to say that I appreciate addressing the mayor and council. I know your work and I know what you're doing with a lot of detail. One of the things I got to do as a pro tem was cut ribbon on the Lafayette Bridge. And I looked around and none of the people around when I cut that ribbon was, was a part of that council that made that decision. So I quickly figured out with Lieutenant Governor Kehoe at the time that I needed to say something that, that I wasn't a part of. So I, I said to the group that they, that I live on the backs of previous councils. That I live with their decisions to move forward. And I trust that they had the right decision. Do you know how much money was spent on that project? I think it is around $20 million. That's a lot of money. Still is a lot of money. But we, we kind of live on the backs of previous councils and hope that they do their due diligence and as we move forward. Plans are imperative. And I didn't have, the slaughter here is heated up for this conversation, but it's exactly about development and giving a heads up to developers of what's going on in an area. That's why we have conferences and plans and zoning. It's, we're going to give a heads up for this area to be developed over this area. And that South Side Old Munich plan gave a heads up to developers that this is what we would like to have happen. Now, I'm not about ready to tell Vern Fectil to move out because we need a soccer stadium there, but. So all the plan isn't necessarily good. Some better than others. But in reading the plan, the 140 pages, not, not really capturing what it meant when you sat in front of these, these planners and they told you how it would come in and evolve, hours upon hours, citizens, citizen meetings, developed this plan. So the plan, we felt, gave a signal to developers of what they could do and expect in South Side Old Munichburg. That plan detailed lots of things with lots of people's involvement. So I'd like to end by saying I found my notes on this present-day capital sales tax. And I had four things that I wanted as a, as a, as a Ward 2 councilman. A council, a board that, that you can't get into the city center without going through Ward 2. You've got to have infrastructure. You've got to have High Street Bridge. You've got to have this ways into the Capitol complex and ways out of the Capitol complex. So Ward 2 is your ward, as much as it is their ward. So we, we, I dug down four things that I'd like to have happen. And I waited in line. We waited in line. We, we had a project in Ward 1, the Ashed Vetter Street. It wasn't my highest priority, but it was well-vetted. It was what Ward 1 thought they needed. And it, and it is a good project. And we used a lot of engineering time, our own personal engineering time on that one. So it cost us a lot of time of our city. So our time came and we could put down what we wanted. My four was, highest was, was a High Street By-Dub. Pretty simple. During the flood, that was the only way into downtown. The second was two-way Monroe. At the time, I thought taking signals from the Old Munichburg plan is Rexwhitten Expressway improvements. We have the, sorry, we have kind of the ugliest expressway to the most beautiful downtown. And so the South Side Old Munichburg plan called for a upgrade of the Rexwhitten Expressway, including, I would say, revampment of the Coca-Cola problem. And I, I made a, made a plea that said, we're responsible for making Rexwhitten a nice inviting way downtown. So that was my third one. And the last one was Ohio Street, which, which at the time seemed to be a priority, but now I would have probably not put it on my list. So with that, thank you for your time.
Nice timing.
I got it.
Thank you very much. All right. That's all we had signed up to speak. Everyone just.
Oh, here. I tried to sign up when I arrived, it was before the people started, sorry. But the sheep was already up front, and so I don't know if I can still speak.
Yeah, say it.
Thank you.
All right. How many are wanting to speak? All right, how many? You have to leave your hands up a minute. All right. Let's kind of work down the rooms.
Sure.
Not sure who was next, but if you want to just be ready. Pat, will you?
Hi.
Introduce yourself.
Sure. I'm Jan Schumaker, and I appreciate you letting me speak. I tried to sign in two minutes before and the sheep was gone, so it was a disadvantage. I just wanted to mention, without repeating what's been said before, but I think one of the reasons we're even looking at this as a situation with two-way on Monroe, which I support, is because it never should have been allowed to develop as it is. I, I've always been puzzled as why that was allowed. It was never a good arrangement. So we're really having to go back and fix a decades-old problem to allow development there. And I can understand why the residents there would be unhappy about this. It never should have been allowed for that. So really, we're fixing something for the betterment of the whole community. We're fixing an age-old problem to make access to the hospital, to downtown, all these reasons that have been enumerated. But I just wanted to reference that it shouldn't be like this to begin with, and we're just fixing that problem. Do you need my address? Okay. 2026 Trenton.
Thank you. Pat? Yeah, welcome. Just introduce yourself. When you get to the microphone, the whole room's a microphone, so you don't have to worry about it.
Thank you for letting me speak for just a minute. I wasn't planning to. My name is Pat Row Kerr, and I'm the former state of Missouri Veterans Embellishment and a court reporter. The court reporter part is, the most important part is I talk about the two-way. You know, when you sell something in print to the public for a vote and we vote on it, it would be our expectation as the public that we would stick with how the vote turned out. And I won't relive for you Steve's good remarks. That's that one. The one I wanted to really educate you guys on really quickly is the importance of the homeless housing and the additional housing. Working with veterans as I do on a daily basis in a pro bono capacity, it is really important that we have additional housing, both Housing 8, Section 8, important that we have additional housing, both Housing Eight, Section Eight, and otherwise. We have moved veterans over here from Columbia to work, and also just to thrive, because they may be disabled or they may not be disabled. So, I do want to encourage you on both of those issues to support what the gentleman from the community centers said, and then to support the two-way. That's all I have, and gosh, that's the shortest I've talked, other than you have a message that you might wanna share with folks.
Yeah, I got it, we'll share for a while, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That was my meal.
I appreciate your comments, and one of the things I often figure about is, you know, the stats are out there that one in ten unhoused or homeless people are a veteran.
They are.
And, that's oddly disappointing, but in a great country. I appreciate you talking about veterans and the needs of that community, so, thank you.
Well, and thank, and thank you for saying that. I wanted to tell you that there are two ways that those things can be paid for. So, there is an organization called Welcome Home that resides in Columbia, and many times with our personal nonprofit that we have that supports veterans, Welcome Home will pay for the deposit and the first month's rent, but our, our small nonprofit, which is supported by the veteran service organizations, we will come in and will pay an additional month's rent. So, now, we've got the veteran in a spot where they can have some time to get adjusted to our community, have some time to apply the tax and get into positions. Welcome Home also has a staff who helps with finding jobs. In addition to that, both Welcome Home and the VA work very regularly with Section Eight. And, gosh, I can think, one block away from this street that we're talking about, where we have a Marine that fell outside to some of the Brooklyn Hermitas, and they hit their two children and wife have been at that house. Gosh, I would say for at least a year, at least ten years paid for by our Section Eight housing. So, you know, Jeff City does great things, and you guys have great power, and you can make wonderful things happen for a lot of people that deserve our support. Sorry, I don't wanna get on that bandwagon, because...
Thank you.
You know, me.
Don't let them back. You raise your hand, correct? Then, we get Steve, and just identify yourself, thanks for being here.
Hello, my name is Thomas Goodman. I, I live at eight oh four Monroe Street, so the two-way Monroe directs me, affects me directly, you know? And, seems like I was gonna say a whole lot of stuff, a lot, simple words, but, you know, I, I, I read the proposal, and there's a lot of verbiage about, you know, what is going to, how it affects traffic. Uh, uh, excuse me, I got problems, but I'll, I'll work it. But, there is no, there is no mention to the people that actually live in that neighborhood. You know, we are part of, the people on Monroe, we're part of the old Munich, uh, community, you know, uh, that street, and I feel like we're being sacrificed, that this is a, that you, you're willing to sever this part of the community, you know what I'm saying, of this community. You know, I, I've lived in, I'm a, and I am a, I'm a, working my way, I will be a homeowner, unless something crazy happens. But, you know, I've lived here for seventeen years, and saying that the, it shouldn't have been allowed to develop that way, I disagree. You know, I mean, who, who, I mean, who's to say? You know, like, it, it, if, if that's an opinion, but it, it is my community, that is my street. The traffic that flies down Ash flies down Monroe, you know? And, if you, if you make it two-way, it will be, it, you know, will have that much more of it. May relieve some of yours, but it'll be, uh, uh, over in, in my yard. I, I understand, like, my position is a, is a NIMBY, uh, uh, you know? But, I think some of the points that I wanted to make is that, you know, the only thing that they're gonna, that you guys are talking about is expanding, is that one section of the road, you know? I, I took a trip and drove around my neighborhood, you know, I, Dunklin, Stadium, Madison-Jefferson, these are, are, you know, and I may be using, I'm not a, arterial roads. Monroe isn't. You know, Monroe is a, is a community street, and, you know, there's no, a, a plan, there doesn't seem to be a plan to expand the roads, you know, to make it, to make it, uh, uh, fit the capacity that you want it to, uh, to, to meet now. It's just, uh, you know, let's see, what else have I got in here? You know, just the, you know, I, I can expect my property values to go down, you know, and, and the, the, this owner, the young, the woman that was treating about her, her business, that Dennis Street, yeah, that retaining wall, that does need to be, uh, uh, taken care of. There are definitely, uh, Monroe Street, like I said, you will, you will make that two-way, and you will leave the street itself in shambles, you know what I'm saying? The sidewalks that were put up on, on, on a, a street away, they're not on Monroe. You know, like I said, it's, there are things that need to be done in Monroe, but I think that, like I said, it seems like many people are willing to sacrifice my neighborhood, my particular section of the neighborhood, you know? And, and like I said, we have streets that are designed for that, or, or, you know, that is a, there are traffic issues in that area, you know, like I said, you could, you could, the fact that there's not a, that fifty, fifty-four doesn't go off onto Stadium or Jefferson, that's your, you know, those are your real problems. You know, the fact that you really don't have that traffic flow, that is a, that's a terrible, you know, like I said, that whole, go look at it on the map, I looked at, I'm sure you've seen it, that's a terrible, that's a terrible setup, you know? I don't know who did that, you know, like I said, you got your own problems, there's properties, uh, uh, in that place, I'm sure somebody, there's somebody that has more power than me said, "I'm not moving." You know what I'm saying, move around me. But, I guess in this situation, you know, it just seems like, well, I guess we're the easiest to be moved. You know, anybody that lives there, I'm sure doesn't want that, doesn't want that traffic, you know, enjoys, there's enough traffic as it is, you know, what, I got twenty-six seconds? Uh, Monroe and, what is that, Ashley? You know, uh, if you're gonna put, if you're gonna make that two-way, you know, we've had, since I, in the, in that time that I've lived there, there are many accidents that happen at that intersection. You know, we've, I've had, somebody's written up, I'll cut it off, but, you know, like I said, if you're gonna, it seems like you're gonna have to, and at the expense of my neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for being here.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
That's my meal.
Uh, Mr. Goodman, I appreciate you being here tonight and sharing. That's really is, you know, your representative and your public servant, that's really important to me, to, to hear your concerns. You know, Two-Lane Monroe has a lot of components of, you know, beautification and enhancing the neighborhood, and, you know, from the, the studies that I've seen, the planes that I've seen, you know, I, I really don't think that these folks will be disappointed with this, and, you know, I think it would actually increase the value of the neighborhood. And, so, I, I just wanna leave you with that, and then also, if you don't mind, I'd like to get you a copy of the plane so you can see it, and I...
And I've, and I've seen, you know, like I said, I don't know if there's a new plan, but, you know, like I said, been here seventeen years, so, we got a big, a big nice plan with, of, of all the things that they were gonna do, you know, uh, nice new roads, trees, parks, all that stuff, you know what I'm saying? I don't know, when is it, is there a day three to this? You know, I don't see where, you know, right now, all it is, is that you're gonna, you're gonna make that one little sec, that, that one section, sounds like you're gonna be demolishing uh, uh, homes in the process, you know? But, it sounds like you're gonna just do that one little section, make that two-way, and then everything else can kinda remain what it is, like, continue to let it crumble.
There, there's been a little bit of misinformation, I think in editorial in the newspaper, about homes that would be, you know, demolished as a result of this enhanced road and beautification in your neighborhood. And, you know, I would never, we have a housing crisis in Jefferson City, I'm gonna look at the entire audience, I would never, a million years back, something that would take out homes, you know, I mean, with the housing crisis that's, so, so I, I do appreciate your concerns, though, I'm happy to, you know, chat with you further if you'd like.
Yeah, so, yeah, I appreciate if you, like I said...
I don't know if we're gonna be here, are you gonna...
My wife, my wife, you know, just, my wife, uh, uh, had a cancer treatment this afternoon, so I don't know if I'm gonna plan on staying for the entire thing, I needed to speak my piece and narrow that out, but, uh, you know...
I'm gonna walk around and give you my card.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Water?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Steve, Steve Waters. I'm a property owner at nine oh six Monroe Street, and I wanna, I do appreciate all of the work that you guys have put into this. I, I was a member of the city council years ago, not here, but in another town, and setting priorities and money and funding has always been a big issue. I promise you, I'm not gonna take up a lot of your time, I think there was a lot of eloquent speakers tonight that really supported this project. I do support the project, there, uh, this was part of the two thousand and eighteen comprehensive plan for the City of Jefferson that was put into place. I understand we have lots of new council members, and I think Mr. Mahalovich said it well, that we try to perpetuate some of these things and hopefully move forward. So, I am not gonna take up a lot of your time, I, I support this project, I've been working on renovating this old house that was built in nineteen twenty-five, there's another one across the street that I would be very interested in. That whole area is being developed, there's, there's lots of people that I've talked to in that area that are remodeling those homes and trying to improve what has been let down for several years. One of them, Heritage Apartments, which is right there, I believe it's in the corner of Atchison and Monroe, had gone in terrible disarray. That has been purchased or remodeling, I was over there talking to the people that's bought it, and it's really coming along nicely. I think you're gonna see a big, big improvement at Heritage Apartments, which is right on that corridor. The traffic flow there, I couldn't tell you how many cars, I'm there about every day, a lot of cars, but I can tell you this, probably eighty percent of them are exceeding the speed limit going up through there. So, I think it's a safety issue, because it's a narrow street, there's a lot of children playing in that area, and if it was two-lane, I think you would have a, a greater area where the traffic could flow both ways, and whether it will control the speed, I don't know. But, I do know that it would be a great improvement to that area, setting it as a high priority. I would appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don't hand me the questions.
My name's Ken Thane, and for those of you who don't know me, I've been a local builder, developer, property manager, and builder for the past forty years in the community. I've been past president of the Home Builders Association, the Jeff City Board of Realtors, and Habitat for Humanity, so affordable housing is very important to me. This project, this proposed project is in my backyard, we have a hundred and thirty market rate rentals there, we have another twenty acres sold for multifamily to, to do more multifamily, and my office is just right around the corner from here. So, I, I come with a broad perspective. I feel that it's important for the city council to consider the overall project. You know, from the standpoint of affordable housing, it meets all the checklists. They've done a wonderful job of telling them, telling you about the, those projects, but I feel where it falls short is the impact it's gonna have on our, our city economic You know, last year, we had four proposals, two of them were from locally and two of them were out of town. This time, we only have one proposal, and it's from out of town. As they pointed out, the general contractors from out of town, the, the management companies from out of town, if they do their financing, uh, construction financing from out of town, and they use local, uh, they don't use local banks, we're sucking all that rent and everything else out of our economic base. And, and let me be clear, that's the number-one reason we have affordable charter, charterage. As they pointed out, or, as has been said before, four of the top five job openings are less than thirty-five thousand. Our, our community can't, a lot of people in our community just can't afford, based on the income they make. Further proof of this is that you can take a two-bedroom, one-bath unit here in town, and in Columbia, it'll rent for twice as much. You know, why is that? Well, they just have a lot better economic base, and they can afford it. We have failed to grow our economic base, which is what I feel this project is, is failing on, because we're sucking, it's sucking too much money out of the, out of the community. To drive this point home further, you know, the last multi, the last apartment complex that, market rate, that I'm talking about, that's been built in Jeff City, was Cherry Creek, and it became an apartment complex because it was a failed condo complex, okay? And, if you wanna go back for the next one, it was, the last apartment complex was built back in the early eighties. So, we haven't had any, you can go up to Columbia, and I can't even count how many new apartment complexes have been built up there, and it's because of the economic base. I just, you know, I'm all for air housing, I wish the city would take the time to consider the economic impact of this development and take, and, and postpone it, and see if they can solicit some local people to build this, so the, a lot of the economic impact for this will impact everybody and keep the money more in our community, 'cause, like I said, you know, you're taking, you know, you take all this rent and stuff, and it's all going into, to another bank or location, you're really sucking a lot of, lot of money out of this economy, and it's just not beneficial for everybody involved. So, I'm a hundred percent behind the affordable housing part, it just needs to be that, I, I'd be a lot more happier if it was dealt with local people, and I think that there's local developers out there that would love to, to do a project in here, and, and so I appreciate you taking the time to let me speak, even though my name wasn't on the, the list, and, thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Cecile Landrum, I live at nineteen oh nine Tanner Bridge Road, I'm also the owner-investor with my husband Steve Waters of nine oh six Monroe Street, and I'm here to speak in support of the council returning funding and continuing with Monroe Street and road improvement projects. I don't wanna repeat what anyone said, a couple of points that have been said that were spoken eloquently, Kim Slaughter's explanation of how, how important the pedestrian access in this community is, and Rick Mahalovich, again, you know, honoring councils that came before. I understand there are, there is a new makeup to the council, but you also continue the progress that's done before. One of the things, as Steve and I have worked for more years than we would like on our, on this home, rebuilding it, because we want it to be somebody's forever home to live there, uh, somebody that will be a part of the community. This neighborhood is a community, and it's a largely pedestrian community. A lot of the traffic that goes up there is owner-occupied cars, I mean, certainly there's other traffic flow, but as one of the gentlemen who was a resident, and I'm glad somebody who was a resident was here, talked about, yeah, there's a lot of people on those streets, and the streets are narrow. I will say, I'm over there a couple times a week, working, and one of the things I saw this, like, two months ago, was a day when a trash truck, a utility truck, and a fire truck all got into a traffic snag there, and basically blocked the street entirely for over thirty minutes. The trash and utility truck wanted to avoid the fire truck, which was a little further down, and because it's narrow, they can't make their turns, and it took quite finagling to get, to get out of there. I've seen two partnered tractor-trailers full of logs that probably a GPS misdirect sent them through these neighborhoods as they tried to maneuver, so, I, I hope, I understand that we will have not just road improvements, but sidewalk improvements, the beautification, everything that will make this an important improvement for the neighborhood. And finally, what I want to say is, this council has worked for years to mitigate the deterioration and ultimate demolition due to neglect by one private landowner. What, while, while progress and improvement in all areas of town are important, this is an area that has had deferred maintenance for years. We, obviously, the, the falling-down wall and everything else contributes to that, that we need to invest our money in established neighborhoods as well as growing neighborhoods to bring economic development. So, we know the city, our member, the community supported the maneuvering that you had to do to take over private homes because they were not being maintained, and we supported that and, and approved it. But, please, don't become the city council that reverses position... But please, don't become the city council that reverses position and promotes neglect and deterioration of an entire section, a historic section of our city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. The agenda, when it was approved, asked that we look at these two resolutions after the public comments. So we're first gonna go to resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen.
Providing the CDBGDR, Lytec applications for stronghold landing housing development.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Sinzi to give kind of an overview of the request and the resolution and provide some more.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just based off of the conversation that we've heard this evening and also the number of emails and phone calls that we've received over the last week, if you'll allow me, I'm gonna do a brief overview of the overall program and then dive into the request. In twenty nineteen, when the city was hit by the tornado, there was enough individual assistance claims filed through FEMA that triggered HUD to open up the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Fund. After working with the state of Missouri, who is the recipient of that funding, they, the state of Missouri awarded us in October third of twenty twenty-two. We have to spend this funding by October third of twenty twenty-seven. There is an overall umbrella, we call a lot, we say CDBGDR or just DR funds. It's an umbrella with multiple programs underneath it. The program that you're considering tonight is the multifamily program. But in the, in the coming weeks, we will be unveiling a planning program, an acquisition and demolition only program, construction for new single-family, affordable multifamily rehab, also down payment assistance, homeowner rehabilitation, a million dollars of infrastructure, public infrastructure to support housing. So we tried to cover the whole housing recovery envelope. So with, with this funding, within your packet that I gave you, you do have the award document and you also have a project that calls activity information. And that gives you an overall view of how much is eligible within each activity. So if you wanna develop a single-family home, you can request up to twenty-five percent of the total construction cost plus closing costs. I provided that for you within this packet. I wanted to let members of the community know that all this information is available on our website. You could see it if you have any questions or need to help navigating, you can call our office and we'd be more than happy to help you out. This specific program that's being requested tonight is, falls under the construction of affordable multifamily rehab, which is new construction. We have the opportunity to leverage the disaster recovery funds with Missouri Housing Development Commission's low-income housing tax credit. So there's one, the DR, there's actually two pots. So there's disaster recovery funds, which are grant, and Lytec, which is a tax credit to fund the construction costs. The difference between, the other question that we hear is the difference between Section Eight and Lytec. The Section Eight is rental assistance directly to the renter. Lytec is tax credits that are made available to make the upfront construction costs easier in exchange for keeping your rent low for the next twenty years. So that is, that is truly the difference between these. I've also kept, within that packet, gave you a budget of the programs. The budget is what we, what we create as, as, as set-asides for each individual program. The community does have the ability to make a budget amendment to shift those funds around should there be more need in one budget category than the other. Going back to this resolution, I did include the state of Missouri CDBGDR proposal and it outlines the process timeline. This funding became available in late June. We worked with developers in office hours on July twelfth. There was a Lytec CDBGDR application workshop held on August second. August fourteenth, the CDBGDR proposals are due. So next week, we have to receive stronghold landing proposals, score it, provide them a letter of intent, and then they go on their MHDC journey for the Lytec process. One of the reasons why they have to come here tonight and seek resolution is twofold. For the CDBGDR funds, there has to be jurisdictional support in order for, as a component of their application. For the Lytec process, also with the council resolution increases their points provided on, on their Lytec application. So truly tonight, the resolution that is being considered is, do you consider, do you want to provide jurisdictional support to stronghold landing to pursue both the CDBGDR application and the low-income housing tax credit with MHDC? And I'd be happy to answer any questions about processes or the application.
Thank you very much. Questions?
So you said, oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you said there's disaster relief funds that will help? All right, so big do to this. At one time, before all this election, all that, we are diverted or moved around money, as I understood it, so that we wouldn't fall off of the deadlines to use it. And I, you can tell me when I'm wrong. So is that part of the money for this and is that, falls underneath this or is that something completely different and spent? A little just lost on what pot of federal disaster relief money we're talking about?
Agreed. I think, I'm looking at Sheila, I think you might be talking about ARPA.
You want to respond?
Yeah, I think you're talking about ARPA, a totally different pot of money.
This is all new to me where this pot of money was from. I don't know if I need, that'd probably take a long time to explain that, but.
This pot was requested last year and none of the proposals were funded, so it's still sitting there. ARPA is what you're talking about.
So how much is this fund then?
This fund overall is seven point three million dollars. And they're broken down, that last page that you see, and there's a paperclip packet. That last page is the budget of overall.
Yeah. I'm just digesting it right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for answering.
I heard an allegation first that local contractors would be used for the project and then I heard from another speaker, Mark. So I just wanted to clarification on that.
Address that, please.
Sure. So again, we have a general contractor that has worked on several projects with our consultants, but we will use locals, subcontractors.
Where, if I could follow up. Where's your, where's your general contractor from? So that could be kinda clear. Washington, Missouri? Is that right?
Was that Missouri?
That's Missouri. Thank you.
All right. You have resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen.
Yeah, we just needed to point out too that the applicant had actually revised the proposals. There's a resolution in front of me right now. It's for a fifty-six unit multifamily housing and that does need to have an amendment with it to reduce that to forty, which is now their current.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna point out to, Councilman Spencer has the resolution out there. There's been some discussion. So I don't know at this point if you want to make a substitute motion.
I would propose that we take up the floor.
Substituting fifty-six for forty?
Forty. And, and the subsequent funding change for the CDBGDR funds.
Just a second. All right, we probably need some clarification on, Councilman Mullen, just so the audience knows.
Yeah, sure. So the resolution specifically calls out a fifty-six unit multifamily development. This floor amendment would change the number fifty-six to forty units.
After the packet was dropped, there was some discussion by council and a recommendation or suggestion and the developer has been very generous to work with council to scale back the project and scale back the request, which Ms. Sinzi indicated to leave some of those dollars for a future project. We do have twenty, up until twenty twenty-seven to invest those. So it takes the project back a little bit and that was the motion that was made to scale that back with, with the substitute resolution. So that's what's on the table right now.
With that information, there is an additional project that we are working on for next year. That's why the request was for, to reduce the CBDGR funding request. And again, thank you for seeing, seeing the willingness to do that.
Councilman Hensley?
Is there a paper version of this?
There should be.
Oh, yeah. So it's, it's all, it's all the details that are on this paper? Changes in funding and everything.
Correct. Yes, the funding's on the back that reduced it by a couple more dollars. Everybody have that document? I wanna make sure everybody's comfortable with the. There is a motion on the table. It has been seconded. Substitute motion for what was in your packet, scales the project back from fifty-six to forty units. Also scales back the request to the city for CBDG-dR funds. We need all the. You ready? Any other question? I, I think you're, all right, any other questions? All right, we're gonna need a roll call.
So procedurally, first the floor amendment and then to approve as amended?
To approve substituting.
Correct. So do both?
We do both by roll call.
I, I think that's probably good practice.
All right, we're, clarify, you are voting now on whether you want to sup, substitute. So make the change in the resolution and we're gonna do a roll call vote.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Okay, now you have the substitute resolution on the table. Any other discussion on that?
Motion to the second?
Motion to adopt the substitute resolution. All right, roll call vote, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Substitute resolution is adopted.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's take this to resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, which is Monroe Street.
The resolution providing staff direction regarding the reconstruction slash widening of Monroe Street between Woodline Avenue and Atchison Street.
Councilman Deacon?
For a discussion, I just have a few comments. Number one, the city is broke. Number two, the city is broke. Eighty percent of our money right now is going to salaries. Maybe six percent's going to roads and bridges. We have resolutions passed by past councils that said we will never promise anything in our sales tax. It's fraught with problems. With this particular project, I don't think we're gaining that much for, for the money spent. The redevelopment that they talked about, that was all about the Central Core down there by Dunkland and Jefferson and Madison. My biggest concern is that the money, three million dollars, displaces seventeen homeowners. Two of them for sure, we're gonna take their homes. We don't know, maybe more. And it's, as everything can, if you see, it's purely cosmetic. All the entrances to the still or cap region are perfectly covered. It's a good road, good road in and out. I would, if we had the money, I could consider it. I don't think it's a major project. We promised Ohio Street Bridge one time, but that didn't happen. The Viadoc, we've said that for years, that hasn't happened. Wild movie said for years. We can't make promises on a boat. We say, well, we're gonna try to consider these. Things have changed. We're not flush with money. Our biggest concern right now in my mind, and more too, is Madison and Jefferson. But my goodness, I was driving the West End today. I don't know how you guys drive on West, West Main Street. That's a rattle trap. That entire thing is, you're gonna have to reconstruct that one. So for the money spent, I would like to defer that money to spend on our major infrastructure. Madison Street, there's so many cars coming in, that's a gateway to our city. Jefferson Street is too. Even Dunkland going up and down, my goodness, that's a rattle trap. And if we can get along with the county and not burn our bridges, they should be our partner and almost like a brother, not as an adversary. Maybe we can get some money to help fix West Main Street. As of now, I have not been convinced that this is the best use of our money as so aptly put by a lady I really, really well respect. And she signed her name on the email and as Ms. Jane Beadham, she said it's just urban renewal with a bow tie. And I'm gonna leave it at that.
Comments? Councilmen, others?
I had, I'd gone through there several times and familiar with, I don't know how many people know back then, but OK Radiator used to be on the corner, that ugly yellow brick building. And so I've, you know, traveled that many times back in the construction area and all that stuff. The thing's coming new and I'm not sure what the plans call for on this is driving and walking up and down, you know, the, part of that section, I'll say, from the middle up to Capitol Region, it looks like there's property there where you can widen it out that from, I wish I could tell you which, Tyler or Oak or something comes into it, coming back down toward OK Radiator, there's houses right along there. I don't see, and I don't, and I'm sorry, I don't, the, the side there, I don't know where, if those are the houses being taken or bought from people. You know, another, the questions I also have are, is there a need for sidewalks? Can this thing be scaled back that, you know, where do we displace, when we buy those houses? We don't have houses in Jeff City on the smaller side because I believe the Community Action House being built is gonna be two hundred thousand dollars, if I remember seeing that from another council meeting over there by the Lincoln's president. So I'm just not sure by displacing these people at that time, where we will move them. You know, I, just the questions on that. A lot of the, going up and down the streets, I told Councilman Lester, I would study it very well over the last couple of weeks and, and been through there. A lot of residential permit parking, there's a lot of one-way streets there. I saw a couple of vehicles that, you know, like any other thing, maybe people just couldn't afford to get them fixed up and they're sitting along the road, outdo license plates and all that. So I was just kinda wondering about the flow of traffic on certain residential permits. They're usually one-way streets and all that. I would very be curious, since, if that study was done, Mr. Calvaro, so I'm sorry if I butcher your name, was that done before the tornado and with all the houses there? Being that, you know, after that now, we have the ballgame there. Personally, I would love to see a traffic count summertime, what's being done through there, when school starts, when those, you know, when they have the sporting events. Because the people I talked to Sunday before, I mean, from Arkansas, played a ballgame at Jeff City High School. So I went up there and just started talking to them about how did they get in there, what they were gonna do when they left and, you know, the routes they were taking and how they were directed to that area. So I, and I'm not sure from Matt's point of view, what, how many, there, if I read through this right, two or three options that the city has looked at of how they can reconfigure it or am I wrong? We can, got some background we can. So I mean, I, but that's a question I have to, what are the, you know, I would like to have the information on it to see what the options are and all that stuff, on how many houses and all that. You know, those are just questions going through that area several times, just, you know, wanting to look at. And then my last thing before I get off of this is, you know, when we had that tornado through there, was there any grants or things for that neighborhood that we could utilize? Or is there money there we could use from the disaster relief that could have fixed up some of the curbs that there's, some of the streets have got, the curbs are all shot. I don't know if that's included in this a million eight or, you know, what's gonna go on through there? I think it's all in agreement to do the fifty to the Dunkland Light. I think that's seven hundred, eight hundred thousand bucks. I I see that, that's been there for a long time. These are the questions I have about, you know, I would like to see what the design was. I'd like to traffic count for school now that we have the new ball fields. You know, it'd be in my interest, I would love to see if we could table this for the the next council meeting, so that if I could get the information, answers, and and make a a very well-decisioned vote on this. Because, you know, it seems like a lot of money for just a three hundred, I don't know, it's more than three hundred foot, I get it, but a a lot of sections and all that, and the displacement of the people in their houses is something I'm really, you know, looking at and really wanna study and and have more questions on it. Thank you for.
Councilman, Councilman Mealy?
Thank you. Mr. Marash, is that something that you can discuss tonight with the council on?
Yeah, we have some background.
And things like that, just so everybody has the, you know, kind of the facts of the matter.
Go ahead and do that there. So just for some background, David Bangin here, our city engineer, is in me as well, so we'll kind of tag team this. But just to kind of kick it up, back in March this year, we we went to the Public Works Committee with this chart here. And on the on the left side, it says original, that was what was in the resolution passed by the council right before the sales tax vote. So you read down through there, High Street Viaduct, five million, et cetera. So that was the original. You know, as sometime passed, this is cooperation with, these are city-county projects. So as sometime passed, Cole County approached us about, hey, we literally would like to get Wildwood back in the mix. And there was support at the committee level for doing that at the time. And so we come up with this chart about, you know, how can we, how could that happen? And at the cost you see there, Wildwood drive, three million dollars. The, one of the things on it was, High Street Viaduct was underfunded in this considerably, as Monroe Street, the whole, the whole distance. There's also some enthusiasm at the time for Monroe Street. So we come up with different options so that committee could look. And they settled on, long story, they settled on B and said, okay, in this sales tax, we could proceed with Wildwood pretty quickly. There's already design on it, has to be redone a little bit, but and then then in that option, it also included a full build out of Monroe, some work on Stadium. And then we have some plans started for High Street Viaduct, where we could kind of show people what we're thinking there, look for grants, things like that to help out with the project. All total, you have eleven million dollars in city-county project money. So that's what we did in March. Since that time, the staff went back and David here.
Can explain him better.
But he's got, we looked at several options of how to do Monroe Street. And what we, what was settled, it seemed like out of this process was a city-county agreement, the council approved it, the county commission approved it, that we would proceed with Wildwood under this scenario, as well as phase one of Monroe Street, which is from Fifty Highway. Back, as you see on the, as you see on the screen here, through Dunkland, down to Tanner Way approximately. And so that was in this city-county agreement that the council approved, the city council and a commission. So that's a little less than a million dollars there, we estimate. So those are proceeding, both could be done, we believe, next year this time. We'd be finishing up on these projects. So that that's kind of stepping through there, it addresses the cash flow issue, gives us time to design the next phase. And so I think Councilman Spencer, who's the chair of the committee, asked us to provide a staff recommendation for what the remainder of Monroe would look like. And so at the last meeting, that's what we did, we provided that, David and staff, he has a memo here, but he could show you. But but basically it said to finish that out, and we try to impact our, to limit impact to the properties, all while getting two-way traffic, normal two-way traffic, sidewalks, et cetera, and kind of show what the impacts of those are. And and we came down to, well, we would try to comport with the South Side Study to the best extent possible. That was the planning document that was referenced throughout this whole thing, kind of the driver of this. So during that discussion was the the idea of, well, maybe we should shift that money. And so that hints why we're here to the to this group. The committee can't do that on its own, really, but wanted to have a more thorough council discussion about it. Since then, we passed out various brochures on sales tax. Certainly councils have changed how sales taxes are spent, as they're prerogative. And even up until you approve the construction contract, really, there's no agreement on what it is, so. But but we give indicators all all the while and come up with these things. David, if you wanna just go through kind of what the recommendation was?
Right, so essentially what you see there on the screen, you know, the first phase, as Matt indicated, kind of goes down to Tanner Way. Well, this project basically picks up in that same area where the previous project left off. There's a little bit of a space between those two, as some of that actual infrastructure is in pretty good shape right there. But again, as the design develops, we'll look at that. So essentially you would come down, and when you get to the area that's now just one way, the street ultimately will widen out, is proposed, thirty-three feet wide. That would allow for an eleven-foot driving lane in each direction, which is the city standard, as well as an eight-foot parking lane. And so the parking would remain, and basically that section would become two-way. There'd be, as proposed, there'd be sidewalks on both sides of the street. And that improvement would continue through the one-way, the two, the one, the section's currently one-way, and then also through the block, as it goes past the the parking lot for the hospital. We have turned it two-way without any any widening of that street, because we were able to remove the the parking. But that street would then be widened and connect into what's at the very bottom left of the picture, the the expansion that was made back in two thousand and fifteen along the hospital when we redid the the stadium and. And so that's, that is the project. And so essentially it would provide, as comments have been made, for pedestrian accommodations along along that entire corridor and would provide two-way traffic.
And the yellow blocks are houses that are definitely affected. Essentially, they would have to be removed. And there's a light blue line, it's a little hard to see, between the two yellow over the blocks, there's, I believe, is it twelve?
Yes, with counting, counting all the properties that are probably affected, there are seventeen. But.
Two houses, definitely, and then the blue line is more just backyards of the folks' houses that we'd have to acquire. So any project that we're doing of this magnitude, there's always property acquisition. Be very rare, we didn't have to acquire some property and make some big improvements like this. Talking about the same thing on Stadium Boulevard down by Satwood, again, having to acquire property if we're going to do our project, we'll we'll have to be able to do that.
Mr. Marash, what 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 is gonna be in place of those two houses that you acquired?
Well, once, if they're removed, then there'd be a vacant lot there that could turn around and be sold. And we come up with various options where if we didn't take the parking, maybe we could demo some other houses on the other side and make parking areas. I mean, there's a lot of options there, but this one comports most with the South Side plan. So that's kind of the discussion we were in the midst of when this came.
Did you have a comment, Councilman Mealy?
Yes, thank you. So, you know, like I said earlier, I'm not a fan of getting rid of houses. Is it your estimation that, you know, we can do this with the removal of, like, what's outlining yellow there with, like, two homes?
And and it's even questionable, the the house that's on the the very bottom corner of the screen. It's entirely possible that a larger retaining wall could be built there and that house preserved. Whether or not the property owner would want that to happen, we don't know. But certainly the one that's sort of in the middle of the screen in yellow, that property most likely will need to be purchased.
So potentially just the acquisition of one property?
It's pop, once you, when you're in property negotiations, once you move the right-of-way a certain distance closer to the home or structure, then you essentially damaged it and you're buying it anyway. Now that owner could work a deal through the process and say, well, I'd wanna keep the structure, you're gonna pay, have to pay me the X amount and build a retaining wall, but I'll keep it, maybe for a little less money, and then I can redevelop it somehow or something like that.
Absolutely, and your team sees that pretty often, I would say.
Yeah, it's fair enough.
Councilman Allers, did you have a question?
So, yeah, well, driving through there, the the first part on the left there, there's a gentleman that's got a car, a pickup truck, and it can't be more than a foot off of that, it's a bluff there. I'm not sure how you incorporate sidewalks there. And so are we eliminating also on-street parking for the west side? Because there's a lot of people parked in front of their places on the, on going up on the right-hand side toward the hospital. So are we removing parking there? Because if not, I still don't see how you get two lanes through there. With the, I could see it further up, but there's no, you have a lot of yard toward the Capitol Region's parking lot, but doesn't look like many houses there, there at all. But that first part, there's, I think there's two or three with vehicles parked on that side of their house. So I I'm not sure how much land is there, and then, you know, I don't know if this this thing can be scaled back to, I don't see where you're gonna get sidewalks and on-street parking for the individuals on the, oh, I guess it's the west side. Right side going up the hill, but I think it'd be the west side. Is that, are we eliminating parking on there because there's, what, seven, eight cars there just this morning?
No, the the parking would be maintained on the west side of the street.
Eliminated.
Uh, right, yes. The parking that's there today would remain there. In the, in this plan, the street would just become two-way. And I think the property that you were referring to in terms of the the car and truck kind of parked up on the driveway, that is the property that's shown in yellow.
Well, that is the one in yellow. Then there are, like, two down. I just don't see how wide that is. I thought, and I guess that was where a specific person or place years ago. I I figured we'd have to, dang near to have to demolish it to give it some leniency for whatever retaining wall's there and for the pressure that's gonna be coming back off of it on the side streets and for the houses living there.
I would say, there's still a, this is schematic in danger, so we kind of get an idea of cost as well as properties affected. Still a lot of design work that could change. Nothing's been decided on the actual design. Kind of the question was, were we gonna continue with this, knowing all the issues of traffic, parking, et cetera, taking out houses? Or and, you know, shift that money, then there's another conversation, it has to happen, of what to do with it, and that could come up later. But it just gives the staff direction of what to focus their time and effort on. Are we gonna do this? Are we gonna do something else? And that's the real purpose of this. And then the design would still have to happen, and we would go through all those issues.
So was our traffic study done? When was that done on this street to say, how many cars are?
There's been no traffic study, really, there's no.
Counters, really?
Revitalization-type stabilization project, connectivity. We know the traffic counts, I think, they're below a thousand a day, is what I recall, on Monroe presently. Certainly, if it were two-way, there'd be some diversion of traffic, I'm sure, off Madison, you know, right off the bat.
Section a thousand?
Yeah. So, you know, it it will change, certainly, if you make it two-way, there's no doubt. But in the great scheme of things, you know, a thousand cars, you know, that's not that much traffic for many of our streets in town.
Councilman Wright, did you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Marash, I'd like to draw your attention to Hickory, where Hickory Street comes into, oh, there. On the on the aerial here, you can see there is a structure right there, and the structure is a is a home and is 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 very, very close to, and that is the juncture at present, where it changes from two-way to one-way going up the hill, okay, going south. It's extremely close right now at that, it's at that change point. So if you widen it to thirty-three feet, I mean, I I would bet you guess that property owner is not gonna be, not gonna be happy if it's gonna be right up against that house.
Yeah, it depends where the current right-of-way line is as well. And just, and that's the other thing, you know, we're shifting the road a bit here and there, you can't tell it's the scale, but all that, we try to account for that.
Councilman Mealy?
I think, Councilman Wright, I think the house that you're referring to is actually an abandoned property, Councilman Lester did.
No, 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 it's not.
No, this is a newer, a newer home. I mean, newer in general.
It's not.
I mean, newer, when you compare it to the rest of the homes in the in the neighborhood, I mean.
It's not very new, it's a small but good home.
Right, it's a small but good home, yes, exactly.
Yeah, and and made a good point to me that, once we get past where it's narrowed, you know, it's really not changing the current line, but it's just rehab.
All right, Councilman Schwartz has a question, did you have a question? Get your neck, Councilman Schwartz?
Mine's.
You have a series of questions.
Less, less questions and more statements. But the first thing I wanna talk about is the study, because I did read it. It's very interesting, it's, it's got a lot of good ideas. I would say in the hundred and thirty-seven pages of this study, this H three group has probably spent a quarter of a billion dollars trying to revitalize our Newburgh, Newburgh area. So I applaud them for for that. But what I wanna talk about is, we talk about how big of a priority this is. But in the study, it wasn't mentioned until page seventy out of a hundred and forty, and it took up a page and a half. And so I don't think it's that big of a priority to the makers of this study. I'll also say that in the back, in the, in the index, there's seven Capitol projects that lay out for the Monroe Street two-way expansion, of which most, if not all, have not been done. And so if we're gonna focus on the study, let's really focus on the study and what it actually says. Now, let's talk about cost. So we've already established, I think, that the resolution is a non-binding, has no force and effect of law. We've already established that. Former city council, of which very few are members still today, and we have a new mayor, voted on that. Now, it's established, I think I heard from Matt, that what was voted on by the council was a one-million-dollar project. That was a resolution proposed to our constituents. It's not even on there in the total. It's on the screen.
Yeah, it's the original column there to the left.
So now we have a new council, more or less, a new mayor, and two and a half million dollars more for a project that we have to make a decision on. And. Put that in perspective. I mean, we 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 say that we should respect what former councils do and what they say. And I don't think anywhere, anytime in the past, any council has made a resolution that said, we we want you to spend a million dollars, and then when we come down to it, it's actually three and a half, and we just say, okay, that sounds like a good idea. My constituents elected me to be a steward of public taxpayer dollar. And for 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 me to sit here and have somebody tell me that your predecessor already made your mind up for you, so you shouldn't have a say on it, it's just ridiculous. And so I wanted a little context on, how how much road is the one-way? Two tenths?
It's two blocks, so it would be just shy of a thousand feet.
Shy of a thousand feet, one-fifth of a mile. So I went, I wanna, I wanted to get some reference. So as most of us know, or all of us probably know, the governor recently signed a two-point-four-billion-dollar, six-lane expansion of I-70 across the state. And so I went to modot dot mo dot gov, and I wanted to see what, how they broke down that cost. Well, for one lane of interstate highway, for one mile, so four-fifths longer than this. For one lane of interstate highway for one mile, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. Yeah, we wanna spend three and a half million, thousand feet. We wanna take out homes. And for what? What do we get out of it? Ruway that hasn't been used for decades? A two-lane road. A two-lane road, according to this study, isn't gonna revitalize Newburg. It's gonna take hundreds of millions of dollars to do all this stuff. But we can do a mile of interstate. Two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. Which leads me to. Kind of my final point in that. To say that our hands are tied. It is not an argument that even should be spoken about in this regard. This is three and a half million dollars. Almost. I mean, more than ten times more. Than the cost of building an interstate, and to do what? I mean, I'm, I'm at a loss of, of what's trying to be sold here. I heard two people testify tonight. That really matter to me, and I, I, I know we've had business people here that I highly respect. I respect residents, the constituents of mine that spoke. There are two people that live on Monroe came to speak tonight. And both of them said they don't want it. So I think we need to respect them. We need to respect the fact that the public has sold a project that is three and a half times bigger now than it was two years ago. And I think this council needs to act in accordance with the new. Uh, new cost that has come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Lester?
With the respective study, I'll just point out that, uh, this, uh, two-way Monroe project was. Part of phase one for, for the study, as recommended. Yes, there's many, many things in the study that need to be done. The way Monroe is identified is part of phase one. Uh, I'll, I'll talk about some money aspects later, but I just wanted to. See, I spoke with former Councilman Mark Schreiber a couple of days ago. And Mark's not able to be here tonight, but he encouraged me to share his thoughts. He expressed to me why he thought reconstruction of Monroe two-way should proceed. And why not doing this city-county voter-proposed project, I mean, bad thing. Not following through on a project has been presented, that has been presented to voters. In a public campaign to garner their support, certain to damage public trust. And that type of denial of express will of voters can and will likely. Be used to argue against infrastructure improvement efforts in the future. Second, he said, ending the project. Been previously unanimously approved by a previous council is. As a worthy and important project, since a bad precedent. Correct, the current council is not bound by previous council decisions. However, those decisions, which have been previously vetted, should only be reversed with conditions dramatically changed. Justifying such a reversal. In the case of Monroe Street. The conditions that have changed make this improvement even more necessary. Capital Region Hospital has expanded both facility and their service capacities and offerings. And then the service and the traffic demand will increase with that. And since the original decision was made, Jefferson City High School has added all the sports complex and fields. And at times, that will increase substantially the traffic demand in the area. Southside though, an older area of the city. Community has many public and private institutions providing vital services. Street infrastructure is old, many dead-end and one-way streets. That create barriers to traveling through it. Existing street infrastructure in that area poses safety issues for police and fire and EMS navigating through the neighborhood. And getting to the hospital. Reconstruction of Monroe two-way is an important step in alleviating that critical access issue. And I recognize about the funding of the project. I believe the resolution has to pass, but I'm certainly. Open to reviewing the proposed project, see if it can be scaled back to achieve the main objective, which is two-way Monroe. I would point out that, uh. Sidewalk on the east side. Probably is not needed, there's no houses that face on Monroe on that side. And I would say also from. East Franklin up to Woodlawn, um, there's not need for, for on-street parking there. So making it as wide as all the rest of it is certainly not needed. As, as the current plan that we were talking about proposed, and I think. Uh, I'd certainly be open to scaling it back, but we certainly need two-way Monroe as been promised to the voters.
Councilman Spencer?
Mr. Marash, you said that approximately a thousand cars go on Monroe a day. Can you tell me how many cars, give or take? Estimation, uh, on Madison Street a day?
Yeah, I don't have, right off the top of my head, uh.
Jefferson Street?
All these numbers get lost in my head. I, I would say it could easily be three-ish, you know, a thousand, just because, and I, I don't hold me to the number, but. Uh, we don't find our, any of our tieros peaking much above four, really.
I think it comes down to. You know, we know Madison Street, Jefferson Street, Stadium in Satinwood, upgrades. West High Street needs upgrades. We only have so many dollars to go around, and we have to put. The focus on where it's gonna impact the most good for the community. When, when that project was originally proposed, it was a million dollars. I think the s- the citizens expect us to make smart, competent financial decisions. And when that project now is almost three and a half times the cost, I think they would say. Maybe we should focus those dollars elsewhere that is, that's really needed, so. I want to add to what, uh, what Schwartz said, because I fully agree with his methodology. Comparatively speaking, between I-70 and what we're trying to accomplish here, it just does not make financial sense. And, um, I'm very comfortable with, with the. Recommendation that the Public Horse Committee made that's before you tonight.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you. Um, just to Councilman Spencer's points of different projects, um. I think Councilman Deacon made the point that the city not having money, and I think that's a fair observation.
Yeah.
We don't have a lot of. Folks who have invested over time and, you know, over a long business city, which is state government, state government doesn't. It's a lot, and, and so that's where we are, but, you know, with these projects with a, a diverting of money, I think is a really, uh. Critical mistake for a couple of reasons. The first being that, you know, we have these half-cent sales tax, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, I'm new to the council, but we have them every five years. And these plans take years to develop, and at least the city has spent a lot of money doing this to develop this plan. Um, when you talk about a half-cent, just a second, I'm talking. When you have a half-cent sales tax. In twenty-tw- coming in twenty-twenty-six, you know, I think we're gonna need the voters. Support of that tax, and they're gonna need to know that we've done what we say we're gonna do. Now, I also agree that, uh. There's no legal obligation to do that, I mean, that's obvious, right? But there's maybe a moral obligation to do that. With the half-cent sales tax coming up in twenty-twenty-six and plans taking multiple years to develop. What council should be doing right now, and I agree with Councilman Spencer, is looking at West High, developing a plan, looking at Stadium, developing a plan. Looking at Madison and developing a plan. But don't divert funds. For a current plan that's ready to proceed in the core of Jefferson City that offers. Critical core infrastructure that I think built out your whole town, I mean, you can't neglect the core next to one of our two hospitals. And build a town out and be successful in that manner, I don't see that working, and, uh, that's just. You know, I, I make that point because I'm concerned and I want my colleagues to, um. Think about that and, and how that works, how a city is built. You know, I know, Mayor, I don't, Mayor Fitzwater, I don't want to throw you under the bus, but, you know, I know previously you've supported this, and there are council members who have supported it. If we want to talk about, um, the cost. You know, let's do that. But back to procedural efforts and, and the way we do government in this town. Let's not on a dime stop a project that's had money spent on it. And divert it to another project that's gonna be several years in the works, and we won't. Build our infrastructure in a timely manner that we need to, uh, by doing things that way. So, you know, Mayor, I appreciate, you know, your past support of this, um, and, you know, I don't know where you are in, uh, conversations, but as of tonight, I'm not sure. You know, if you have comments, but. We can't, we can't, governance doesn't work like this, it doesn't work in a form of, something goes to a committee. And. It's put on a public agenda, yes, but. Council, I, I as a council member didn't know what was going on with it. I was absolutely in the second ward, so what I encourage my council members to do is if you have a concern about a project that you think is over budget. Absolutely, we do not want to waste taxpayer money, I don't think any of us want to do that. But start with the second ward, you know, historically, this is how things work in, in governing bodies, start with the people who represent those areas. Let's chat about it, we can do that offline, not with an audience, and come to conclusions about how maybe we can, you know, make this work, or maybe in the end. You know, things are the way they are, but let's have those detailed conversations with staff and crush the numbers, so. I would be interested in, uh, amending this resolution. That it go back to staff, because I think we still have some, some numbers and, and plans that we need to work out. But amending the resolution so that it would go back to staff, um, for more discussion and a kind of a finalized. Plan at a reduced cost, maybe with removing the sidewalk on the east, as Councilman Lester had said, and that kind of thing, so I make that, uh. Motion to amend the resolution tonight.
You wanna? Give the specific wording? Council? Councilwoman?
Yeah. Do you want to amend the resolution, or do you want to send it back to committee for additional staff work?
Right, send it back to committee for additional staff work to finesse. Their own resolution.
We asked.
Yes, it's Scott's, it's all the words in playing.
I just, so I have just some questions. So the original, is that what originally was on the half-cent sales tax on the, what says under original? Uh, with the five million dollars for the viaduct and all that stuff and nothing in, you know, demolition Wildwood. On that, so it, it seems like there have some. Count, or I guess councils previously or committees previously have had the exercise of the right to exercise of moving dollars around. I would think, uh, I would be curious that the three million dollars went to Wildwood because. There, it is an easy study and something that was done, Mayor and, and, and Councilman Spencer, that it's a, it's a go project and it, it was, you know, the, the, it was. Roughly, uh, to do, or. I mean, the million dollars for Monroe Street, I think just, was that encompassed the whole thing, or was that just the area from fifty to Dunkland? Is there clarification on what that million dollars for Monroe was for at the time?
The original, the main, it was publicized to the public from Dunkland to, to, uh. To Woodlawn. And, and they put it on from, from Witten to Dunkland because, yes, it does need to be, it's a safety issue, and so that's why. Why it got it put on as phase one, but it was not part of the original one million.
Original one million was the, the fifty to Dunkland and the like, did you get that cleaned up and looking nice?
The original was from Dunkland the other way to Woodlawn. That was the original. But the, but Witten to Dunkland, they put on because it's a safety issue and it need to be addressed, and I'm all for that. But it was not part of that original package that was proposed to the public.
All right, because I think that number was what, seven fifty, a hundred thousand for that little section?
Eight hundred thousand for, for that section.
Well, like, Councilman Lee and Schwartz being new, uh, just kind of wondering what the, you know, having this information, I would. I would propose, uh.
We've already got a discussion item to change, we were getting guidance from. The city attorney on how the, how to go about that if there's a recommendation to change. Recommendation would. Why would the therefore be changed to send it back to committee?
It, it doesn't need to be, it can just be a direct vote. You don't need to vote on the, if there's a motion to send it back to committee, there doesn't need to be a vote. On the, on the merits of the, of the resolution. It doesn't need to be amended at all, it's just a vote to send it back, it's procedural.
Oh, a question?
We don't have anything on the table yet.
So, so did you make that motion?
And your, your motion is to send it back to committee?
I'll send it, I, I don't know if the words matter, but send it back to staff for a finesse. Um, with minimize, you know, home, uh, demolition, uh, let's look at the sidewalk, let's engage the stakeholders. Um, and have a, a transparent discussion about it and then have everybody make it in form of. So, I would say, take it, sorry, you didn't eat all that, but I say take it to staff and committee, certainly.
Staff have the authority to bring it, that resolution then back when. Propose it.
If that is what the council wants, just to bring it back to the, to the city, back to this body and. Just the, the, the council or the committee. So, you know, nothing's been designed yet, so I think the resolution was to say, we're either going to work on it or not. And, and if we are, and if it passes that we are, there could still be direction, hey, minimize the dollars, the, the best extent practical, things like that. Uh, we, we gave you the cost for the full improvement, kind of in the spirit of the study. And, uh, so it could be through the design process, scale that back considerably. To the best of our ability, but if you want two-way traffic with some parking, it's gonna be painful, uh, to the neighborhood. And, uh, certainly we could. Things, uh. Okay, that may not look like a lot of our city projects when done, but we can, uh, we can do that, and then it's not, I, I'll point out too that. Worked here for twenty years, it took many of those years to do the full high street improvement from downtown to McCarty. Small section first, and then years later we did the next. Same thing on McCarty itself, all the way out to the new Walmart, so we did that over a number of years, so the council does have. Has always modified these numbers and made it kind of work with the costs we're working with at the time, so.
I would just ask, there may be some unconflict, because the. Resolution indicates to send it, appropriate city staff to proceed with work to design and initiate the reconstruction widening of Monroe Street. By sending it back to staff, there's a directive in there that once. Council is comfortable with what staff does, the project proceeding.
Yeah, that could take many forms, and it has a construction contract, so, you know, there's still a lot of moving parts there that have to be approved by the council. This would not be the last action that this council has to approve, there's. Acquisition, there's construction kind, all kinds of things that have to occur. And the approval of that final design as well, so that really wasn't, didn't happen already.
The council's documents, so. So your, your motion is? One more time?
Well, would it stand, I mean, from what I just heard, maybe it doesn't necessarily work, but it would be a motion to. Send the resolution or to halt the. but it would be a motion to send the resolution, or to halt the resolution. Staff works to, on the plans with, with council and stakeholders to finesse and figure out some of the concerns, because I, I take the cost concerns to heart, like, absolutely, you know, my colleagues have good points. Take those cost concerns into consideration, present this as a new resolution with a, can you present a resolution with the estimated cost of it to work? Then I think that would be better to do it that way. And in that way, it's, you know, black and white as to what, you know, what.
And just clarify, you want to bypass the Public Works Committee?
No, we can certainly go back to Public Works.
That's, that's not what your motion was, kind of.
All right. You put your, it's your motion. So you put your motion out there the way you want, then we're gonna.
Basically, it's to send, to send it back to Public Works and Planning.
We're sending it to Matt, to Matt and the staff.
His motion is to send it to staff.
So we can, if, you know, the formality of this is to send it to Public Works and Planning, and that staff has input, that's fine.
You got, it's your motion, so you got.
So I make a motion to send this resolution back to Public Works and Planning with input from staff.
We have a second. And Councilman Schwartz had a comment.
I'll second that.
Councilman Schwartz.
So is this an amendment to the resolution?
The, the resolution's not on the table yet, so it's basically a motion.
Substitute motion.
You're going to amend his motion that's on the table?
That's right.
Your amendment.
That providing direct, that the council needed to provide direction regarding the reconstruction of Monroe Street between Woodlawn Avenue and Atchison Street. And then I have an amendment to that substitute. I have a substitute motion that provides direction that basically the council will provide direction regarding the reconstruction of Monroe Street between Woodlawn Avenue and Atchison Street. Your motion, go back to the original.
Would you get that motion?
So Councilman Mealy has a motion on the floor. Tell it's, tell it's approved, it can't be amended.
Why can I do a substitute motion?
We've got a motion, a second on.
He has, he has a motion, second. He's entitled to a vote before you, before you can amend it.
Once it's approved, then the policy?
Subject to another vote by the city council.
I'll withdraw my motion.
All right. We got to move this issue along. All right, we've got a motion and a second on the table. Would you please read the motion?
A motion to send the resolution back to the Public Works and Planning Committee with input for, from staff.
Is that the intent of your motion?
It is.
Any other comments on that motion?
One comment.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
The original intent of this resolution was to give finality to that neighborhood that they've specifically asked us at the Public Works meetings for two meetings in a row, that they wanted a final decision. So now we're taking that away from them to, to do all this. So I just wanted that to be noted on the record, that we were asked to do something by your alls' words, your representatives, and we did that.
Councilman Mealy.
Thank you, Mayor. There are residents in the, in the neighborhood in Ward Two who need a decision. This thing is, you know, three, four years close. And, you know, I just think that getting this right is important for the people of Ward Two and Jefferson City. And I think to get it right, we need a little bit more clarity.
All right, you have.
Now just, can I just say that I've talked to, to Mr. Payne quite a bit, and, and, yes, he weren't resolution about what was happening, but, but the resolution just was more about where this is going to happen and some certainty about, about that aspect. I understand.
All right, everybody clear the motion on the table. It has been seconded. Do a roll call vote, please.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
No.
Spencer?
Nope.
Spicer?
No.
Wiseman?
No.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
No.
Deacon?
No.
Tinsley?
No.
I'm ready.
We have nothing on the table. Councilman Spencer.
I'll have to present my original resolution, which we voted on.
Recommendation, or motion to adopt the resolution that was in the packet?
Second?
Second. And we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution as was presented. Any other discussion on that?
Read so everyone knows exactly.
And, and how the vote is supposed to be. A yes vote equates to this and a no vote equates to this.
A yes vote is a resolution providing staff direction regarding the reconstruction widening of Monroe Street between Woodlawn Avenue and Atchison Street.
Everybody clear.
A no vote is to have those funds accessible for other projects. And it ends the city's staff's time on this project.
Staff, the, the summary, yes vote on this resolution instructs staff to continue with line and implement the phase two project. A no vote instructs staff to discontinue the phase two project.
Everybody clear.
Well, my understanding is, is a yes vote still that's in, incorporated in it is still that we can consider scaling this back and funding. It's not what was previously been discussed as eight point five, two point seven. Sorry, I just wanted to make that point.
I think that's the way the language is interpreted. All right, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Mealy?
Yes.
Schwartz?
No.
Spencer?
No.
Spicer?
No.
Wiseman?
Yes.
Wright?
No.
Allers?
No.
Deacon?
No.
Tinsley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Six noes, resolution is not adopted.
All right. We're going to go back to consent agenda. You have items before you, we'll need action on that. Motion, second. All favors say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Rules introduced, twenty twenty-three dash two seven.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorized the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the administration in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-six cents for the removal of interior workings and the bus wash and installation of the new bus wash system.
Morris? Thank you. This indicated this would just replace the workings of our bus wash and our other fleet vehicle, same wash as well, located at central maintenance. We are able to get a transit grant for this, this work of about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of that two sixty-six. The rest would come from our transit matching in the CIP, which is about a little over fifty-three thousand. I have to answer any questions.
Any questions? Twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight.
In ordinance repealing chapter nineteen, section twenty-five of the city code regarding parking division employees.
Thank you. And this would repeal a section of code in the parking ordinance that basically identifies the parking staff as similar as police officers. So this would repeal that section. I think Councilman Schwartz indicated he would like to suspend the rules.
Councilman Schwartz?
Yeah, I'm, I'm moved to suspend the rules to go ahead and take this up. I just, I don't know if people have it up in front of them, but essentially what this does is give parking employees the same rights as law enforcement officers to arrest people. I don't know if that's legal. Second of all, I think in an age of de-escalation with regards to law enforcement, usually people that get a parking ticket are kind of mad anyway. I don't see any reason to escalate the situation. And so with that being said, I just move that to take this over, out of our penalty.
And the opposition to proceeding? Councilman Wester?
I, I'm assuming staff is on board with this?
Yeah, our, our staff doesn't operate in this manner.
Requires post-certification to exercise the right of arrest. This is inconsistent with state law. It hasn't been enforced for many years. It's a bit of a vestige. And so it's, it's a good idea to get rid of it.
Just claim it up. Okay. Saying no further discussion.
In ordinance repealing chapter nineteen, section twenty-five of the city code regarding parking division employees.
All right, you have twenty twenty-three dash zero two eight in front of you, roll call vote.
Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Tinsley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy? Bill passes.
All right, twenty twenty-three dash zero two nine.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, providing for the levy of city taxes and establishing the rate of taxation for the city of Jefferson, Missouri for the calendar year twenty twenty thirty.
statute requires that cities establish their property tax rates on an annual basis. The proposed FY twenty-four mayor's budget has been prepared based on the property tax rate of four six cents for the general fund and nine point six one cents for the fireman's retirement rate for a total of fifty-five sixty-one. This is the same rate that we have previously adopted. The public hearing for this will be held at the August twenty-first council meeting. And we are required to submit to the state no later than September first our property tax rates, which is why we are introducing this now. We will have conversations during the revenue discussion on Thursday in regards to property tax and any modifications that council might like to obtain. But we need to get it on the schedule now in order to adopt and have everything presented to the state by September first. I'm answering any questions.
Any questions? All right, zero thirty was withdrawn, twenty twenty-three dash zero, zero three one.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a one hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred twenty-one dollar agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Metropolitan Transportation Planning Services for the period of November one, twenty twenty-three to October thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, reflecting consolidated planning grant funds as approved in the Campo FY twenty twenty-four Unified Work Program.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is, uh, this is kind of our standard annual grant acceptance with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. It grants us federal contribution to operate Campo in the amount of one hundred and ninety-two thousand approximately this year. That requires a twenty percent local match, which should be approximately for the city of Jefferson, about thirty-five thousand. So we are recommended approval of this bill. Have any answer or any question?
None, twenty twenty-three dash, dash zero three two.
In ordinance authorizing the purchase of sewerage system remedy bonds, series twenty-three, the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed four million dollars, prescribing the form and details of said bonds and the covenants and agreements that provide for the payment security thereof and authorizing certain actions and documents prescribing other matters related.
Mr. Murray?
Thank you. It's kind of the next to the last step of the bond discussion for wastewater on this four million dollars of the forty-four million approved by the voters. So what happens from here, this introduces the bill, and then at the next council meeting, there would be an actual name and, and to fill into this blank, we have bond council working on that to advertise, to sell this bond.
Any questions? All right, twenty twenty-three dash zero three three.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating additional funds within the general.
She.
Thank you, Bill. Approximately a year ago, I took over in this new realm, new role as police chief. And when I took over the job, I was asked repeatedly, what's the biggest challenge that you face? And every time, and I'll still say it today, it was hiring police officers and nine-one-one operating. So part of my plan, we commissioned a study with Hi-Five Communications to do a marketing analysis and a brand analysis to figure out how we sell this profession. And I look at it in three ways, selling the profession, selling our department, the selling our city is what I'm trying to accomplish to this goal. Hi-Five Communications came back with their recommendations of recruiting and marketing strategy, that we could hit those three problems, and also preliminary budget, which was a common sense budget that would support the recruitment of police officers and nine-one-one operators for our department. What I'm asking, and I was going to take this up during budget talks, but as we were having our budget meetings, the interim city administrator and I thought that there might be an appetite to, to go ahead and start taking this on right now. My recruiting budget last year was twelve hundred and eighty-seven dollars, so this would substantially increase that. But I'm looking to create a marketing strategy to, to really draw interest to our community, our profession, and our police department.
Councilman Spencer?
Just a real quick question, this is for HR. How much does HR use dollar-wise to recruit for police and fire? Do you, do you break that down by departments at all, or do you just have a?
All the recruiting is funded out of each, each department. So it's whatever the department wants to spend. So usually we'll present information to them and say, you know, we can do this, and give them different options and what things could cost on the data side, because it comes out of their budget. Thank you.
Councilman Mealy?
Thank you, Mayor.
And Councilman Allen?
The, is the general, using the general fund just because it's a HR action?
Using the general fund, fund balance right now is because I don't have the funds available in my budget to make it happen.
Okay, that makes sense. And then Hi-Five's local, did you look at other contracts? And I know we discuss this in Public Works.
Well, what would happen is if I'm approved, this amount, up to this amount, then this would go out to a bid process. And if we invite bidders to deliver this multifaceted recruiting campaign that, that was the recommendation, the study of Hi-Five, and that would include radio ads, website development, targeted social media, and a lot of, not a lot, a portion of that fifty thousand goes into production costs to include constructing videos, professional photography, way to market our job in a manner that would attract people to the position. So once those production costs are incurred, then we can make the determination on how often are we running radio ads? How often are we updating LinkedIn, those websites and those sort of things? So then we can approach, approach from that, how much are we going to do in it?
Sure. And then, Mayor, I made the comment in public sector, I just want to share with you, you know, with your interest of including an FTE for a comms director. And then, Mayor, I made the comment in, uh, public safety, I just want to share with you, you know, with your interest of, uh, including an FTE for a comms director in this, uh, upcoming budget cycle. You know, I just made the comment in public safety that, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's fifty this year, but it doesn't always have to be fifty because that's, you know, some of the role that could be.
And I would add that it did get, uh, voted on unanimously by the Public Safety Committee.
Just one basic question, Chief. Uh, is it, is it, is it, do you see it's harder to recruit this day and age? Are you looking for people to come into the profession or to move from one department to, you know, from another city here? Is that, you're looking to recruit?
Yes.
Young gentlemen or women to come in and all that?
All phases. We'd like to generate interest in the profession itself, but we've got a story to tell about Jefferson City. If you're disgruntled in another community, Jefferson City is the place that you want to come work as a police officer. I got to be able to tell that story in a manner that would attract those folks to our community. So, uh, I like new recruits, I like crusty old veterans from other agencies that can come in and, and assist.
So I've seen that on, uh, subdued programs, uh, certain governors were saying, hey, we, we like, we back people moving on, so.
Feeling that way here as the whole defund the police movement was going on nationwide. This city voted seventy to thirty to pass a public safety tax reform. That speaks volumes about the support you get from this community. Those are the things I've got to get out there regularly, uh, to generate interest to those people deciding on where they will work as a law enforcement officer.
So have you included this in next year's budget, a, a, an increase in what you think? Or, I know it's just pie in the sky, you're just like, I don't know what to put in here.
I had, I had added it to this year's budget planning, and we made a decision to maybe take it up in this, in this, uh, venue before we.
Okay, but then next year's budget, you, you might include other than what, twelve-fifty you started? Maybe you said twelve-fifty or whatever it is.
I had twelve-hundred-and-eighty-seven in this year's budget for recruiting. Can't be much of that.
No.
The benefit of starting this early and starting it now is that if we, because there is time to put it out for an RFP, you've got to go through the selection of bid process. If we were to get this rolling, then by the time next year's budget came around, we could assess the impact on whether we're having any success or not.
Okay, twenty-twenty-three dash zero-three-four.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the Jefferson City Police Department and Fire Department enter into a joint project with Cole County Emergency Medical Services and authorizing the expenditure of thirty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and seventy-six cents to implement a countywide automated voice dispatch system.
To you, Chief Wilton.
Thank you. Uh, there's been a lot of discussions, uh, recently about enhanced cooperation between county and city government as it relates to nine-one-one services. This is a project that both the fire department and emergency medical services, uh, feel would greatly benefit their agencies. So automatic, or automated voice dispatch, uh, if there's a medical emergency or a fire emergency, as those tones go out, automated voice dispatch would, uh, relay the information directly to the first responders in a much more efficient manner and free up our communications operators, uh, to go back to taking the call and assessing the situation. So as they're typing the, uh, information into the call screen, the automated voice dispatch goes out and it gets, uh, gets the personnel on the, on the road a lot quicker. Uh, we are proposing to utilize the opioid settlement fund, and that would be in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and seventy-six cents.
Councilman Spence. I'd like to suspend the rules and take a vote. Any objection to suspending the rules on item zero-three-four? Any other questions or comments?
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the Jefferson City Police Department and Fire Department enter into a joint project with Cole County Emergency Medical Services and authorizing the expenditure of thirty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and seventy-six cents to implement a countywide automated voice dispatch system.
All right, you have twenty-twenty-three dash zero-three-four in front of you. Do a roll call vote, please.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy. Schwartz.
Aye.
Bill passes.
Great, thank you. Twenty-twenty-three dash zero-three-five.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with B and P Patterson for the Beeth Drive sidewalk project.
Thank you, Mr. Press.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Clerk indicated a construction project, B and P Patterson, uh, construction out of land. Uh, the cost is just, uh, under eighty-eight thousand dollars. It actually filled in three gaps in about three areas, one over off Beeth Drive, uh, one off Dix between basically the Greenway and Third Boulevard area, and then a connection, sidewalk connection from Lowe's to a new bus shelter bed. And now the half-cent capital improvement sales tax for sidewalks.
All right, twenty-twenty-three dash zero-three-six.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the transit official manager to apply for federal financial assistance on behalf of the city of Jefferson and to execute any contracts resulting from such application for any grants between the city of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, providing for capital, operating, and/or marketing assistance comprised of federal funds to be expended for commission-approved transit projects.
All right.
Thank you. Periodically, we've had to update this, uh, this ordinance, uh, but allows our transit manager to apply for grants as they come available. This one, we would, uh, focus on buses. Uh, we haven't been able to get buses in the last several years, so when we've done this, but, uh, we're still trying. Allow him to apply for those.
Councilman Spencer.
And for clarification for all of us, that, um, that doesn't buy us until those grants are, are.
Approved.
Completely.
Have to be approved, and then they would also, uh, there'd be a construct, they're better enough. A contract for the buses as well.
Thank you.
Comes out of, uh, largely grant-funded, but there's a rule in the sales tax for transit matching for grants, and that's similar to car wash money.
All right, twenty-twenty-three dash zero-three-seven.
Amending the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget by reclassifying the cultural arts specialist from the two-ninety-two budget to program manager full-time position within the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Spence, you're in the pod back there.
We'd like to, uh, amend our budget and reclassify our cultural arts specialist to a program manager. This position would continue to do cultural arts and scrown tremendously the last couple of years. Uh, this would, uh, still be an hourly position. In the future, it would financially impact our department about three thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars.
All right, twenty-twenty-three dash zero-three-eight.
Amending the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget by reclassifying the recreation specialist, two-seventy-four budget, to program manager full-time position within the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Spence.
Thank you. This would be, uh, we're asking for an amendment to our budget to reclassify our, our recreation specialist that deals with our spec, special population, uh, programs, that works with our, our own programs and Special Olympics as well as, uh, that does our concessions. Uh, this position is also grown, so we, we want to remove it from being a full-time, uh, hourly position into an exempt position. And also would have a financial impact, sorry, of three thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars.
All right, twenty-twenty-three dash zero-three-nine.
Amending the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget by reclassifying the park senior maintenance worker, two-ninety budget, to park maintenance crew leader, full-time position within the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. This would be, uh, we're asking to amend our budget and reclassify our park senior maintenance worker to a park maintenance crew leader at our golf course. Uh, recently Brian Braun, who's our superintendent, has moved into an assistant director role, so he's a little bit of a void there. He has a, a long-time employee that has filled in that role and done, um, more work, and we feel that should be the time to move him up into a more leadership position.
All right, Texas bill's pending, we have one, twenty-twenty-three dash zero-two-five.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Tri-Lite Corporation of St. Louis, Missouri for archaeological services not to exceed one-hundred thousand dollars.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this bill, uh, privileges would allow us to enter a contract directly with Tri-Lite Co- Corporation for purposes of archaeological services. Um, this would allow us to contract directly with them in need of, uh, in, in situations where we need archaeological services as opposed to going out for each individual project. Uh, would be a one-year contract with the possibility of extending for two additional years. Uh, this could be used for projects which, uh, might be related to MSP, but also other projects where, uh, anytime excavation may be in order. Uh, so it would kind of facilitate a quicker turnaround on some of those, uh, projects. So, do you have any answer, any questions?
Councilman Allers.
Just because I can't hear very well from over there, did you say if there's things at, at the prison site, and if it, if it's excavated there, they could, they could look into it? I'm sorry, I can't hear.
No, that's correct, yes. If there's any excavation done and anything is found that might need archaeological services.
Yeah, that's what I thought you said, I'm subtracting it, I couldn't hear you.
All right, I'll try to speak up. Thank you so much.
Councilman Schwartz.
If they dig up their air conditioner, would you have them put it in here?
At least, I'll put that in our notes.
Thanks.
You want to amend the most? Don't answer that. All right, you have twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one-seven in front of you. Going to do a roll call.
Dash zero-two-five.
Zero-two-five. You can do that one too? Done too far. Zero-two-five.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
We're on zero-two-five, did I hear that?
Yes, I'm sorry, we're on twenty-twenty-three dash zero-two-five.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley. Lester.
Aye.
Mealy. Schwartz.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Now the informal calendar, twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one-seven.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, terminating a license agreement with Bird Ride Incorporated for a shared active transportation operation.
Councilman Spencer.
Just plan to leave that on the informal calendar.
All right. Resolutions, item fourteen, we've already done A, we've done B, we've done the C, twenty-twenty-three dash one-five.
A resolution to executing asbestos services agreement with ARSI Incorporated.
Mr. Spence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is very similar to the archaeological contract, so this would allow us to, and authorize us to enter into a contract with ARSI, uh, which was the, uh, the low bidder for the asbestos infection and abatement contract, but it would allow us to contract directly with them, uh, without the need for the bid process for the next year with the option to extend that contract for two additional years. And do you have any answer, any questions?
Councilman Mealy.
Sure.
Cost in here, review. So this would be, uh, there's not a specific cost, so it would be, um, on a case-by-case basis for the contractor to, uh, provide the service. So it would just allow us to contract directly with them for that service. They are the ones that we are contracted with currently as well, uh, and have been for the past three years, so it would be more or less continuation of that current.
Sorry, it's been a long night.
Ask.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the resolution?
Second.
We got a motion, second, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy. Schwartz.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
All right, motion passes, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash sixteen.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Tobin's Towing LLC.
Chief Wilton.
Thank you. This resolution would authorize a contract with Tobin's Towing LLC for the towing of, uh, city-owned vehicles as well as abatement vehicles on the right length within the city limits and accidents in which the, uh, operator of the vehicle has no preference on toes. Tobin's, there were two bids, uh, Tobin's, after all the scoring, um, one, our recommendation towards the, uh, lapse of this bid. If awarded this contract, it would allow for up to two automatic renewals. So it's one-year bid, or one-year contract with two automatic renewals. Do you have any answer, any questions?
Comments, questions? Spicer, do you have a motion? We've got a motion to approve.
Second.
Other discussion, there will be a roll call vote on twenty-twenty-three dash sixteen.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right, fifteen presentations from the gallery, and any other? Sixteen council staff discussions, I don't know of any. Business, none. And eighteen closed session, we will need a motion to go into.
Like to bring something up.
Can you call presentations on it?
No one signed up, but if you would like a miss.
Sure. Identify yourself, please.
My name's Darryl O'Brien, I live at sixteen-oh-two Catherine Street. Been a long-time resident of Jefferson City. Uh, dad retired from the city for forty-two years, my grandpa retired from the city. Couple of things I want to hit on, of course, y'all have been beat up around this, but, uh, this, uh, recycle on trees and, and yard waste and stuff. So I've heard four members tonight say that they're worried about, like, people in their district, and they want to make sure that they're using their funding properly, especially on this Monroe Street. Okay, so on that, in turn, we're giving money out of my pocket to people that doesn't deserve it because we had a flood over there in Jefferson City on the north end. Uh, we had all these pallets float, uh, from out of the city. My taxpayers paid for that. Your all's paid for that, but not him. So what are we going to do? He's wanting tomorrow to have a meeting to rezone that over there, Courtney does, so he can start the malt site. So I'm just saying, talked to Mealy, talked to Lester, I've talked to several of y'all, a couple of y'all. My thing is, if y'all are from the people that put y'all in them spots, that maybe y'all should be here tomorrow morning at seven-thirty and let them know that, you know what, if the flood comes up again, which it will, who's going to pay for that cleanup? Is it going to be my tax money that you all are giving them to have that over there? The other thing I've heard was from the police chief here that, uh, he's having a one heck of a time finding employees. It's not just everywhere, Cole County's got it, been there, done that. Department of Corrections, but the thing of it is, if he gets that contract, we're going to have limbs scattered across the Missouri River Bridge. Do you have the police department to be able to go over there and stop traffic to pick up M limbs? Probably not. So we, as a council, that's supposed to be for the taxpayers, let's think about that before y'all vote on it in two weeks, because I hear it's coming up. There's a couple of other things is that, uh, you know, we keep paying and paying and paying. One thing I want to mention, Ray Wallace, uh, if you all get the newspaper, read the newspaper of July twenty-first where the lady said that Ray Wallace is the one that picked the contract for the tree removal for the Parker Recreation Department. Ready? Yep. What else can I?
All right, thanks. All right, Councilman, I think you got. All right, Councilor, I think you've got a motion on the table to go into closed. Was there a second?
First amendment to Section six-ten dot zero-two-one, the revised statutes of Missouri, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following, attorney-client privilege, section, section six-ten oh-two-one, subsection one. Relate state six-ten oh-two-one, subsection two. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, six-ten oh-two-one, subsection three. Individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, where records begin with employee, their application for employment. Section six-ten oh-two-one, subsection thirteen.
Sorry, Councilor, now your motion is in order.
I make a motion, we go into closed session.
Second.
Got a motion is second, we will need a roll call on that.
Allers, Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer. Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Okay, we are gonna go across the hall to do that, thank you for everyone.